Please everybody, remember to use your mics, it really helps with sound. And six o'clock again, they haven't called me in order. If you'll rise please for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the right of our first amendment, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal and everlasting.
I want to advise everybody, the meeting is being recorded, so staying is consent to being I wanted to make a motion, like you did last time, to adjourn the meeting or continue the meeting at nine thirty. Wouldn't you give us three and a half hours?
One second.
One second. Any discussion?
I do admit it turned into a six hour meeting generally, a session.
And, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
So does I. First item up is public comment, and Joseph Lars.
There is a microphone there, sir, if you just want to switch that up. See that switch on the side, just push that.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
All right, um, my name is Joseph Lars, I get by Marty. My wife, my wife Lori is here, we live at seventeen Country Manor Lane. And basically, I'm here because Brenda, um, at the office told me to get on to the agenda here. We're requesting, um, streetlights on Country Manor Lane. We're the only street off of Simmer Road that doesn't have any streetlights at all. I have a plot plan from nineteen eighty-nine for the, um, community there. And interestingly, um, there's number six on the notes here, it says, "An agreement to provide streetlights shall be established between the owner and Met Ed, and a copy provided to the borough." So, I don't know whether they mean owner, meaning the prior owner of the land, or owner meaning property owner. Um, but, actually, I'm just, uh, basically, wanted to get onto the agenda, so, uh, being uncommu-, unfamiliar with how to do this in New Freedom, um, you know, can you give me any pointers as to what to do? We moved about a year ago, where we previously lived was a new development where the streetlights were there, but nobody turned them on. And, uh, am I serious, Lori?
Yes, Met Ed would not turn them on.
Eventually, it was in Shrewsbury Road, so there's nothing, nothing bad about you all here, but, um, eventually, I became enough of a pain, I guess, to have Shrewsbury or Met Ed, that they, uh, they cooperated with each other. We got ahold of the developer, it was Phil Donnie, Phil, um, Phil Robinson, yeah, yeah.
We know that name.
I'm sure he knows the name, yes.
You say Phil.
Everybody knows Phil Robinson, we all know him. He found that out. But Phil was a big help, he told us what to do. And he told us that he had signed off on the lights, and he told me to call Met Ed, and I got ahold of a guy over there who's very helpful, and they got us with Shrewsbury, and they got lights over there, they're out now, and then we moved, so, um...
Who put the lights up?
Uh, they were done by the developer, by Ryan. Um, and then Phil...
They just didn't turn them on?
Yeah, Phil was brought in to finish the development when he told me, because they had an issue, um, and I'm not here to talk about that, but that, that, uh, they were there, they were established there by the developer when, uh, it was, uh, Fox Chapel Cross, if you ever hear of it, next to the road, in case you want to. But there's no, um, LA Avenue has five lights, um, uh, the one, Simmer Road obviously has lights, uh, Rutledge has lights, the one down, um, going down the hill towards the one lane bridge on the left, I can't remember the name of it right now.
Mulberry?
Mulberry starts with M, thank you. They have lights, and, um, I know generally, when I've been told by the guy at Met Ed that I dealt with, if lights are put in after the fact, they're generally gone, um, near transformer, or near the right of way, is that correct? Yeah. Um, plenty of transformers there, I'm not sure all the people on the street will be happy about that, but, on, on your website, you have about the increase in crime, and I have forty years' experience with Baltimore County Police, I retired as a captain back in twenty-eleven, and I worked on Valley, and we had, it is precinct in Baltimore County, but we also had, um, established the, the lowest crime rate because of things like this, where we got people on board, looking out for each other, lighting was a big thing, and, uh, turned stats around like you wouldn't believe, and I'm very proud of that, so I thought I'd come in and, um, let you all know that. And there was one second area, I wanted to thank you for one thing, uh, we noticed as UPS trucks sped up and down our street, that there was no, um, speed limit sign, anywhere on, um, that's like, everybody forgot about Country Manor, I think. But they put us, um, I think Wade got that up for us, somebody got it up for us really quick. They got one sign facing, I guess, towards the cul-de-sac.
Coming to Sam.
Probably that is, from my experience in testifying, if anybody at the end of the street comes out the other way, and saw the original sitting down there, with either a, a speed enforcement or something like that, um, any officer who testifies in court likes to testify that the defendant passed X number of speed limit signs when they were stopped. And if they come from the end of cul-de-sac, even though we know that one sign is down there facing when you're coming in, if they could put, you can put one of mine on if you want, aren't there? Um, but if they could put another sign up there, we'd really appreciate it, you know, just another twenty-five mile per hour. Because a judge, especially in Baltimore County, they don't buy the thing about the driver's ed book, where it says, "Well, you should know that," you know? They want to see the sign up, and they want to see that tag on back of the sign that says it was officially posted there. So anyway, so that's why we're here, my wife is here as support, and, um, if you can tell me what to do, I have no problem running with it, but I just, you know, Brenda said come in here and, you know, I'll let you all know about the issue, and, um, see what can be done with that.
Yeah, I think the, um, the other streetlights, probably on Rutledge and, um, the other side streets, those were all public lights, right?
They were public lights, by the way.
But in their own way, yes.
Yeah. And, and basically, to just jump in, it would be up to council to direct, you know, me to begin working with Met Ed to, uh, get with their design team and get those streetlights installed, obviously with the Borough's expense, uh, to install those streetlights, uh, because that's all underground electric in that area, so it would require pedestals and conduit between the lights from the transformers, as, uh, as you indicated. So, uh, basically, that was the, the idea of having you come tonight, was to, so that council could hear and kind of provide direction in the office to, to work on that process or decide how to move forward.
Okay. As a first step, can we get a, a ballpark estimate?
Yeah, we can. Um, I should be able to pull pricing from the Simmer, something similar with Alcoa, and have it engineered before we get down that road.
Yeah, you know, I, I just want to, I just want to get an in, and also, how many other streets would want lights for that?
Well, it would depend on the type of light fixture and light bulb chosen, and the spread of the light, and, you know, most of the time you have to get into a, a light study and make sure that the placement is sufficient. I'm not dealing with ten dots, which I can, uh, tell you, be very difficult to install lane or state road. Um, not difficult, just more hoops to jump through, so...
Can you, can you do that, and then put it on the agenda for next month, so we can see where we're at?
Yeah, yeah. Again, just wanted to make sure we had the direction of council how to move forward.
I have a quick question. The work that Met, or that Met Ed are already going to be doing for streetlight, not just to replace fixtures on existing things right there.
Turning, turning them into LEDs.
Right.
Yeah, they're just switching out the fixtures, so, yeah.
Have you talked to any other neighbors?
Um, a few, often, and you get the usual, well...
I'm, I'm asking because you actually bought the house for my parents.
I noticed the name when I was...
I know the street very well, it is very dark, especially...
It is, and I, I don't know if you've been by, uh, mine, but, um, I have it. I, we had, uh, and, we'll come back for a minute, we'll check with Wade, we had electric run to, uh, the side of our driveway, and I built a mailbox, um, post with, uh, a lantern on top, and I'm, built it out of, exactly, the wood, you know, the, the rock proof wood. And it throws off some decent, you know, some light there, still at the end of the cul-de-sac and then on the way in. And, we do have a creature that roams that area, I don't know if you're familiar with them or not, but, uh, gentleman that roams the area.
I think we all do.
Okay. And then we have, um, and we found out too, I had to have the property survey for fence, and we found out that we actually lived in the middle of the railroad track where Lincoln went by, and it was dark when he went by too, so, um, I, um, the ones, you know, the ones in belly are not overly fancy, I mean, they don't look like, you know, they look like the budget wall at Home Depot.
They're not regularly telephoned poles.
No, they're not, no. They're standalone.
Freedom Hills.
Right. They're like black, um, along the...
Broadiron or something, yeah.
But they, they throw out a decent amount of light, so, and I know, you know, light is a, uh, a deterrent, and, um, uh, when we go out, it's your guess as to whether we're home or not, and, uh, because, um, I'm very big about that.
Has anybody on the street put their own lights up? I know I have like a three light.
Right.
Like we're talking about in front of my house.
No, um, I don't, I think, they may have one or two store spotlights at the end of the driveway, which go out exactly one hour after they go on, generally, you know, or they seem to. But not, I don't think, I think it's the old adage that I ran into when I was in Conkey's ville, is that nothing happens up here. And it does happen up here, and it will happen up here, it's happening on the police flower, and, um, one of the, the burrows don't like to be seen, they don't like to be heard, and they don't like to be caught, and, um, you know, with light there, it'll be somewhere else.
It's a deterrent.
Yeah, and you can run down my street, or, and I'm sure you can do the same thing, where, I mean, you were there, and tell who's home and who's not, you know? Because, uh, some have new lights at all, and, uh...
Well, that's, that's giving Andy a chance to forget her.
Okay, just, does he have any information that we might require in that? What he...
I can leave this with you.
Does that, we do have that?
You have a copy of it, okay. Well, there's, I don't know if there's another part of, I don't know if there's another part of this plot plan or not, but this starts, okay, up the street, but he does have that notation in there, so, thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir, just confirming, uh, for the record, that there is no HOA in that community that would enforce a street lamp, or, I'm sorry, a pole lamp regulation or a light on the front of your house.
From what I understand, he had some stipulations when he, when he developed this area, and, um, one of them was no vinyl siding, but that's, that's probably what he said, that's...
I was saying, many, many years ago, that started along with the cedar shaped roof and...
The roof and stuff like that, so, uh, there's a lot of things to do, plus that lot next door to us, getting him to cut that is...
My dad and the neighbor took care of it.
We do it, I do it all, yeah. Me and, um, Tim across the street and, um, Jason, I think, across the street. Thank you, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mara?
Good evening, guys, can everybody hear me? I don't really hear anything, I talk about kind of loud. Um, I'm Myra, um, from here in Freedom, and most of you know that I'm here tonight because, um, we're going to talk about a Christmas parade, which happened last year, and, uh, we're looking forward to doing it again this year. Uh, last year was a big success, and, ah, I'm still hearing about it, a whole year later. In fact, I go into stores, I'm in Walmart or Salt's or something, people will come up to me and say, "I'll shoot the parade leak." And I'm like, yeah, okay, but anyway. Anyway, tonight, we want, I want you to come to, um, to talk about the route, because last year, we started at the borough, I mean, we started at the community center. At the community center, actually Freedom Avenue, we started there, and wound around down to, uh, Front Street, and the folks made a left, or tried to make a left on Front. And I had a couple of them who were pretty big vehicles, I had low boys and all kinds of stuff, who couldn't really do that turn very well. So they were maneuvering, trying to get that turn, and because they're apartments right there, there were cars there as well. So, this year, I talked to Terry, white, with the fire, um, police, and we talked about maybe extending it down one block, or one street to Broad, which is a larger street, and that would give more turn radius for these vehicles. And those who did not want to turn, the one guy, last year, said he would prefer to, because his area is in Glen Rock or whatever, um, to just go straight on eight fifty-one, which makes sense to me. So they would have that option, they could either turn left on Broad, or they could stay on eight fifty-one and head out of town, or go where they need to go with their vehicles. Um, so, I don't know, and it was brought up, someone asked me about turning right on Front, which is right there by the pizza shop, and I totally didn't agree with that, because that would impact them significantly, because that night is a busy night, everybody's out eating, shopping, doing whatever, and there are cars on both sides of the street there as well. So those trucks and buses and stuff wouldn't be able to turn there. So I thought it'd be a good idea just to extend it down to Broad, they turn left on Broad, they can just stand once they get down there.
So you really just need us to approve your parade route, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we both, oh, we both talked to Keith, and he feels that he's got enough fire police that they can handle any extension going down to there. It's going to cut off the ingress and egress for most of the town, but, um, I, I think it's much better than getting a truck stuck down there on Front Street.
Yeah, I agree. I would entertain a motion to approve the parade route.
I make a motion that we approve the parade, the parade route, I can't even talk English now.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion?
Do it. What do we need to get from ten dots since you were...
That did come up from Keith, does he need something from ten dots?
It's essentially just the same as fourth of July.
Yeah, it'd just be an intro.
Whatever, whatever it is, yeah.
Yeah, it's a parade route application.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we do that?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, the parade is not going to be the same week as the Christmas tree thing, right?
No, December thirtieth or the third.
Or the, I should maybe say it the other way around, I mean, to me, it would make a lot of sense to happen at the same time, but...
We're, we're working on it, we'll see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote aye.
Thank you. Just wanted to let you guys know that, um, the flyers aren't even out yet, but, um, we so far got thirty-one loads signed up. And that's just early registration, so once the flyers go, go up and around town, and tell people, call register, so...
Fantastic.
We tried to, last year we made it work. We doubled them up at the community center, you know, on the parking lots and all, we get the cars tight. So I don't know how this is going to go with the more, the bigger it gets, and, you know, so we may be looking next year or something to expand it, because, um, fortunately, last year, I, my concern was them hanging out on Main, and not being able to get everybody in. That's why we doubled everybody up, and tripled everybody up, you know, at the community center, to get everybody in and around to come down, so, but, um, this year promises to be another spectacular event.
But I, I still get to be Rudolph, right?
Yes, you do.
What about, what about using the same parade route as Fourth of July?
I thought about, well, we may have to, that's why I'm saying, we may have to do that.
Yeah, that keeps, you have a big long, I can't remember the name of the street.
Shafer.
Shafer, thank you.
It goes way down there, yeah.
Um, it can be a big long run, kind of in the neighborhood, kind of, actually busy.
Yeah.
We actually, actually started the parade down that way.
Yeah.
For the Fourth of July, because there were so many...
So many, yeah.
Yeah.
So we could just, we could just continue on.
Well, we down to Shafer, I think we did, didn't we?
Yeah. So it's a Shafer, yeah, because, yeah.
If you're walking in, you're tired by the time you get to the community center, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much you do for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, other public comment?
First street sounds good, I have my first, yeah, moving. You said the third, right? You said the third?
I said the third.
Okay. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. You might, oh, thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of council minutes held September twelfth. It's actually, uh, there were two, oh, twelfth and the twenty-sixth, straight.
Do we approve these both at the same time?
Well, we go for the twelfth and then the twenty-sixth, I guess. I'd entertain a motion to approve the September twelfth minutes.
I'll make that one.
Thank you. Any discussion? Corrections?
I have turned in a paper that's highlighted with some items from, from the minutes to be included, as well as both leases were not, uh, the motion was not reported properly. The first lease, the motion was nineteen hundred dollars a month for one year, that was the motion.
Hey, we're on page one, right?
I, I didn't put, the, the leases aren't on the highlighted paper. That's not independent. But we had, you know, we had the public comment, but we had two other citizens that also reported disturbances from the business, so they should be included, so we go the, um, proper The community center, I was just missing what the Lions Club is holding it for, to look back in the year and ask, well, what, what do they want it free for, and nobody knows, so it's, you know, just things, um, that were missing. And infrastructure was listed as nothing listed, but Dave did report that the basketball facility was damaged and in need of repair, so...
You're right, we're still talking about September twelfth, right?
Oh, the first one, okay. And then I think it's, it's important to, on the roof replacement, you know, Andrew gave good dialogue on what the situation was, and to have that included, so that people know why, and the extent that the borough has gone to, and present the situation before we jump into a whole roof replacement.
I believe in the previous meeting, it was mentioned that it was twenty plus years?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would, good.
I'd, I'd amend my motion to include the, the corrections.
Need to remember that minutes are a summary of action items that were taken by council. It's a brief description of the action, the motion, and the second, so minutes are not meant to be verbatim, all-inclusive. They're, they're meant to be a snapshot of the motion and the action obtained in council. Uh, you really need to look at what the benefit is of adding things when thirty years from now, is it, does it, is it important that on October eighth, nineteenth, the dangers of vaping, or is it important to know that there were two uses of the community center that were donated during, or during that, that meeting?
There was definitely a lot more than this to discuss, this is just a snapshot with the detail, because this is the official record of the borough minutes, and, um, absolutely, when the Lions Club gets free uses, free a year already, and then they come and ask for more, if people are like, what, why do they need more? Well, it was for the community, they did a vaping and a blood drive, that's important information.
We've done that every year for twenty years, right, Kim? Additional uses for blood drives and community service type things.
Yeah, community service type things, we've always donated the use of that. I mean, I, I did have a few things, uh, that I think, I, I think are important, because some people just read the minutes. Um, and in my mayor's report, I thought it was very important that we let people know that, um, the safety reports and, uh, the community involvement, being aware of scams, the break-ins, the car thefts, um, some people, they read the minutes, that's the only way they know about that, I don't know, that's...
I, I, you're, you're going to have fourteen, you're going to have fourteen pages of minutes, I mean, I think that's appropriate to put on Savvy Citizen as an alert.
Oh, we did, we did.
It should be appropriate, put on the website, but, I mean, if we list your entire report on...
No, 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 it was just one or two things that I felt were very important to get out to the community, but...
Yeah.
We've just had so much going on the last couple of months with break-ins, with scams, I just, I, I want people to be aware that they're going on.
Well, we already talked about that, and it was going to be cut and pasted into the minutes, or attached?
Or attached, yeah, attached, I don't have a problem with.
Okay, so that's...
And did you have something written up that you from...
Well, no, I just made some notes about a few things that I had mentioned from my report, from the police report that I've all worked on.
Erica had suggested that we submit a report in writing, and then that could be attached, it could be, make a PDF out of it and attach it.
That's a read on a couple months back.
I know, that's kind of hard to do when you can't pick up your packet until Friday, and it's, the meeting is Monday.
What's your report's going to be though, right?
Well, let me ask you this, we had talked about this before, do you post, and I, I'm, haven't done it, it's probably my own fault, do you post the draft of the minutes way prior? Okay, so we can, so I don't have to wait till the packet comes out, I can go on the webpage?
But you could write up your report and submit it either tonight, or, you know, whenever, and just, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
That way it's automatically included.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
So I have a first and a second to approve the September twelfth minutes with these additions.
The one addition that's not on that paper is the lease, that, that was not the motion for the lease, the motion was nineteen...
Where, where are you, I'm sorry?
On page three of the minutes, at the bottom, the, the motion that Ryan made...
The continuance, or the...
Nope, we're still just on the twelfth. The motion that Ryan made was for nineteen hundred dollars a month for one year, that was the motion. The motion didn't include, um, number two and number three.
It was nineteen hundred dollars because that's what was in the lease.
Yeah, the lease is...
Yes, that, that was his motion.
As presented. Which was nineteen hundred dollars.
Right.
And then the discussion was to make sure that it was one year, verify...
Right, that's what he had, that's what he had, Ryan had clarified that.
But the discuss, that wasn't, you don't add the, the motion, the, the motion is very precise, you don't add in all the talk around it as the motion, the motion is precise. His motion was solely approve the tasteful occasion lease for nineteen hundred dollars a month for one year. That was all that was in that motion. There was other discussion, yeah, we talked about room numbers, we talked about square footage, we talked about, we talked about all kinds of things, but the motion itself, and I think that's something that we have to all work on, so we make it easier for Andrew when he does do these minutes, that we need to reiterate, and I believe by Robert's rules, is the president supposed to reiterate out loud the motion, so it's clear, so Andrew gets it down properly, because we all want to be clear on motions, it's, you know, important, we can't be adding in whatever the discussion was, and saying that that's what the motion was when it wasn't.
I have to go back and look at the tape, I have no recollection.
That's what I had in my notes, and I mean, I, I do listen to the recording, but...
Uh, can you verify up on the tape? Uh, can you verify up on the tape? All right, um, so we have a motion, a first and a second, and can you add to your motion and verify the Tasteful Occasions lease motion by Ryan? And make whatever corrections required there? Okay, Dave, I think you made the motion.
Yeah, I'm told that, amended. There were two motions, right, Ryan made a motion, and then we, we made a motion to do the, to have the study for the next...
Yes, that's in here too.
Yeah, that's in there already, yes.
I think in the minutes, the, the, was it a thousand dollars? Was first, and then we had the discussion after about a couple of times, and then we decided on the nineteen hundred, uh, for one year.
That was the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the September 12th minutes with the changes noted and the verification of Brian's, um, with the wording on Brian's motion. All in favor?
Hold on a second. So Dave, Dave, you were mending your motion to include these suggestions as well as verifying the Tasteful Occasions studies, and then who was the second?
I think it was, uh...
I didn't, you did?
Yeah, on the minutes.
Oh, on the minutes, yeah.
Okay, so you have to agree to...
You have to second it again. Okay, all in favor? Puzzled, by the design?
Yeah, definitely.
September 26th minutes, um, your page one comment isn't correct. What I said was, um, it wouldn't necessarily have to be voted, there are my exact words, however, it would be required to be done before the next meeting, because we only had a two-week time limit on the bid, so...
And I clarified, we would not be voting on this, and you clarified, no, this is for a presentation, you just summarize it.
And as we discussed it, it was added to the agenda, as we discussed it, and when we got to the point of making a motion, I asked for a motion. Nobody had to accept it, nobody had to give the motion or second the motion, and it was voted on six to one. So I'm not going to mince words or be petty about it, but I said we didn't necessarily have to vote on it that night, we were going to present it, but the natural course of the discussion led to a motion, a second, and a vote. So it was passed, and again, I'm assuming you approved it to the contractor, or came back?
Just waiting on feedback from Shrewsbury.
So I'm going to let that one stand, I, I don't agree with it.
I listened to the minutes, and it, you said it was to be presented for discussion only?
I didn't say that, I listened to the minutes, and it's, I listened to the tape twice, and what I said was, we didn't necessarily have to vote on it tonight, but it had to be done within two weeks before the next meeting, so we would've had another continuation meeting had we not made the motion and voted on it. Uh, I also need a motion to approve the September 26th, um, minutes.
That's a continuation, maybe?
Yes, correct.
Will we accept that, the minutes with the modifications? A second.
One other point of discussion, these percentages are, are what the current contract says, there's probably going to be, there's probably going to be some further discuss, discussion with Shrewsbury Borough, because the percentages have changed, there have been, I mean, because of the Chesapeake Bay requirements, the actual percents have been changed, we are talking about that, we made no commitments, because that would have...
Well, it's not a commitment, but that's what was reported in that meeting, and if there's an update, we can definitely update it at a later time, but that's what was reported in the meeting.
Those, those percentages are in the current agreement. That agreement, that, that agreement stands as it is, there are no changes to those percentages at this time, because we need to be approved by all parties, so...
Right, that's correct.
What, what you're looking at is the flow differentials in, in those percentages, but as far as those percentages that are listed in, in the document that you provided, they are correct. That's the current agreement.
Yeah.
That's true, all right, yeah.
I mean, it's what was reported in the meeting, that's what I'm coming up about.
So if we, if we end up changing this, and then it ends up changing in the future, where is somebody gonna go back to look for that?
Well, if it changes, there'll be more minutes from future meetings saying what, you know, what the, what the percentages would be, and there would be a new contract, so... But currently, that's what the percentages are.
If we're just putting all this level of detail in, and this is, I guess, not completely set in stone with...
Oh, it is set in stone, it's, it's a contractual requirement, yeah, I don't, I don't have any problems stating it in the minutes, I mean, that's what it, what it is now. I'm sorry, who made the motion, Dave? Did somebody actually second it?
Seconded.
Okay, I'm sorry. Any other discussion?
For clarification, I, I guess we need to, are all amendments or suggested amendments being included in your motion?
Yes.
What about the page one?
No, except for page one.
Any other discussion?
You want an amendment?
All in favor? Puzzled, by the design? Treasurer's report.
I was wondering, Andrew, if we could get something like this photograph we did for like a year, and you're like, you can like see for a year, kind of what the delinquency was, or do you something like that?
For Ralph a year?
Yeah, just for like this year, but would that, would that be difficult? So I have, and it had it like ongoing, like from, you know, like...
Year-to-date?
Yeah, like it year-to-date and kind of might, might fluctuate. Is that possible?
Yes, as long as we record those numbers, because those numbers obviously would change throughout the year, so those numbers have to be recorded at a snapshot of time to, in order to generate that chart, and they do, they do fluctuate, obviously.
Monthly, would it be done?
It is done monthly, yeah, yeah.
Something like, I just, I just look at that and kind of go, well, what, where, where is it, where has it been, I know it's better than it was, you know?
It's really, and, and just for everyone's knowledge, that number does fluctuate, because you're always looking at, um, bill due dates in thirty days past due, so that's, that's what we really look at when, when a property's thirty days past due, it goes on the delinquency report, and at that point, that starts our proceedings as far as collections, so... Yeah, the number does fluctuate, it'll, it'll drop down and then go back up a little bit, depending on the billing cycle, but we can, um, we can add a table and chart to this report.
It jumped up in September, is there a reason, do we know why?
Exactly, it just, it matters when that billing period falls compared to the thirty days past due, so, uh, for instance, you know, we've already started shut off proceedings, so that'll drop that number back down as people get the notices too, so it matters when the due date was, when the billing period was, when the due date is, when we're able to post the properties and send notices, so that's what...
Still running less than half to what it was, about half.
Yeah. I think we're down to twenty-some thousand, I think.
We were, yeah.
And on page twelve, it's kind of so confusing, reimbursement for the senior center for the fifteen seventy-five, everybody says reimbursement.
I'm sorry, what page?
Uh, twelve, the top line for the September account, reimbursement senior center fifteen seventy-five.
That's the title of the account, um, that's for their lease, there's two portions to their lease, current lease, one is a reimbursement for utilities, one is a lease account, um, so we just balance those accounts out, um, and what we're gonna do is clean that up, obviously, in the new lease, it's just a lease, it's not a reimbursement for utilities.
That word'll go away, 'cause it might sound like we're paying them, even though it's on the revenue.
It's a reimbursement for utilities, yeah.
Well, it's a gazen, it's them reimbursing us, right?
Was there, for this, for this current year, was there utilities in their lease, or did they pay that separately?
It's in their lease. There's two, yeah, there's two portions to their lease, one is their lease payment, one is a utility payment, yeah.
It's kind of a fictitious number, because we don't really know what the utilities are, we just allocate it as a percent based on square footage.
I'm gonna sound real stupid here, on utilities, are they still able to make payment at the local banks for those?
No, they took that away.
Okay, then, then that leads me to my next question, why do we have bank fees under, like, the water fund going on page seven? And I see it elsewhere, all this bank fee, water, a hundred and nine dollars and sixteen cents, I don't know.
Those are fees charged by Peoples Bank in, in the water fund and the sewer fund.
Some are for BBT, some are for Peoples.
Right, because of the, the billing software, we had to use a BBNT account, because Peoples Bank was not set up to, to do the, uh, revoke teller deposit, um, so basically, we run the checks through a machine, um...
Oh, okay, and they charge us for that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's quicker and more concise to be able to do that.
I remember when you said we were gonna do that, but I didn't realize there was a fee associated.
Well, that was set up before I started, it was in the process, yeah. It wasn't finished, but it was in the process.
Can I see on that page thirteen, the community center tables, seventeen hundred and ninety-nine dollars?
That was, I had not actually tables, those were for table carts, yeah.
So the carts to hold those tables to be able to put them...
Store them properly, correct?
In the closet.
And that'll go right into closet door, set up for...
Yeah, they were measured so that we can get them in the door.
And then I, over those two pages, thirteen and fourteen, the warehouse totals up to thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Well...
My goodness.
So you need to...
It's engineering fees. That's just... It says engineering streets of Stormwater, is that actual work that they did, or they just looking?
Throw all plans on which one you're looking at now.
There's three at the bottom of page thirteen for three streets, Dickinson, Stormwater, North Street, and Franklin.
Yeah, so Dickinson Court, so at the bottom of thirteen, that was all work that was done as part of that, the parking and the design, to see if we could expand the road, and how, how that was gonna all be laid out, um...
Plus, there's another city, so that took us nearly seven thousand dollars to look into that.
Yeah.
I think we need to take that stuff into consideration before we...
Yeah, and Franklin Street?
I don't think any of us realize how expensive that stuff is.
And Franklin Street, just to look into, what was Franklin Street for?
Franklin Street is work, um, all of that is ahead of grant opportunities for, um, a multimodal grant for, um, streetscape design, that's all for improving crosswalks, pedestrian flow, um...
So is that just for them to design it, to put it together, optional cost, what, what is?
That's, that's the entire design.
For them to design Franklin Street is seven thousand five hundred? For that?
Engineering fees are not.
This is actually, if you, if this, if this was our previous engineer, it'd probably double up.
This is all getting ready for, just like the pickleball, that's, that's getting ready...
Twenty-seven hundred a tuss is gonna be a four hundred thousand dollars.
That was ten thousand, ten thousand dollars, just, that was...
It's completely designed.
But are we gonna use it?
That was what we were asked to put together.
Well, I know, but I mean, I don't think that's...
It'll be used as part of the, um...
You, you can't ask, you can't ask for grant money.
Oh, my goodness, down here, pickleball, another eight, so eight thousand six hundred eighty-seven in addition to the twenty-seven oh four?
Yeah, it's, I mean, that is completely designed, ready to go, uh, and that's the direction that we were given to, to get those things ready.
Can grant funds be used to offset that?
Well, they'll be used for construction.
For construction, but not for construction.
But you needed this to apply some grants, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, just maybe as a council as a whole, we can take it in, you know, it's easy to say, oh, we'll just look into that and see if they can, you know, make this better, and he'll take it to the, I mean, maybe we, we need to think about that.
It'd be the same thing if we had a, an engineer on the, that in office in here, and we were paying it.
Thirty-three thousand in one month, I mean, that's...
But these are for plans too, I mean, it's not just to look at it and give an opinion, it's to...
Well, Dickinson was, you know, I mean, that was gonna happen there, and, you know, who, who knows if the pickleball court's gonna get put up, it's just, you know...
Yeah, it's something because of... For four hundred thousand, yeah, I don't know, that's...
Well, but that would be rolled into master site plan, but that portion would be doubled.
I mean, even, even the, even the lighting, I mean, when people come in and say they want street lighting, I mean, we're not, I, we specifically asked Andrew not to go to the engineers, and that's why I kinda do that, because now, if other streets want lighting, and this is all going to be, there'll be a project, I mean, and, and things don't, they're not cheap.
A lighting study to do, um, country manager, I can almost guarantee you, just the study alone would be ten thousand dollars, just to get...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, just to get the location of the lights and the spread.
Transformers and shielding for the lights, so they don't flow on to, you know, disrupt other people's housing, and, yeah, I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous.
I just have one other consideration, looking at for the sewer fund, the water fund, and the office fund, that they get bottled waters delivered at an expense of almost five thousand dollars a year. And, you know, I mean, it's been attested to that our borough has safe drinking water, everything's good, is that really an expense that we need to have when we have good drinking water? And, you know, my husband takes water, bottled water to work if he wants extra water, or something like that. You know, it's one twenty-nine, one twenty-one thirty-nine for three departments every month, you know, almost close to five thousand a year.
I won't drink my water out of the tap.
Well, Dennis swears by it. Talking about good...
This must've come from a different, he doesn't have hundred-year-old pipes.
I mean, and when the council does, it, you know, clean, safe drinking water. So, and at times, I'm just questioning if that's a needed expense.
I really don't think it's that much per month, um, because I know it's not delivered every month, but I can pull that information.
And just one last thing is the table covers on the last page, the three seventy-one.
For the community center, for the tables that are being rented.
So we're providing the table covers that they have to use?
They can provide their own, or we can provide them, yeah.
What are they made of?
It's a plastic, it's disposable.
Okay, so they're disposable, so are they, if they don't wanna provide them, are you charging them for these table covers?
Well, they have to use table covers now, according to the new lease, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, if you've got bingo dollars going through paper on those tables, it's gonna go right through onto the, and we just had the, um, public works guys go up and clean, scrub, power wash all them. You, you and I saw what a mess they were, so we're requiring them to be covered, if somebody doesn't have them, we'll have them there.
So if they provide them themselves, do they get a cheaper price?
No, because if they want to use something that they have as some type of decoration or something, yeah, no, we didn't change the price, but it's just included in the rental, they're not gonna use it, you know, they need to be, no matter what, they have to be used.
For the VFW dance, we used the ones provided by New Freedom Borough, but then we decorated over top of them.
Do you know about how long those would be expected to last for what you bought?
They're one use.
Well, I mean, did you buy enough to last six months according to generally how you rent, um, or is this a years worth?
Yeah, we ordered a couple cases, um, I can't remember exactly how many we ordered, uh, but it's all depending on the number of rentals and how many tables they're gonna use. I would anticipate that lasting, uh, four to six months, depending on, it seems like in the fall here, we have more rentals than, uh, we've had in the last couple of months, so that might be a little bit shorter timeframe. Hopefully that, uh, lengthens the life of the tables as well, so it's, it reduces the, the public works going, spending half the day with these.
I volunteered to help, you didn't call me. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to approve treasurer's report pending audit. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Does, I don't see. Okay, um, Marge Goodfellow Park improvements, is there an update?
Um, we are, and again, this is not, this is just a proposal, it's not an out of charge, but warehouse is working on putting a proposal together for, uh, the master site plan and feasibility study. Uh, we did submit a grant to the, uh, York County Planning Commission, their open space grant opportunity that allows recreational open space planning. So we submitted a grant, uh, for, request for twenty thousand dollars to, for that opportunity. This would be a conjunction as, as we spoke in the past about pulling, uh, to Berken team to pay for some of that study as well. In exchange for not putting up the pavilion, we need to make sure that we have a, a better plan in the future, so...
So the twenty K would cover the...
It's not warehouses, it's not gonna...
It'll cover some of the costs though.
Some, yeah.
Can we combine grants?
Yes.
Cause I know Parks and Rec have some grant, I mean, I guess you get those, right?
Yeah, and I, I just wanna caution on that because if you start looking at DCNR for master site plan or feasibility, the, you're going to probably double your cost because what we did is we took their, uh, master site plan and feasibility study guidelines and cut them down to fit what we really need, uh, for a plan.
I think that happened when we originally did Marge Goodfellow Park, we probably could've done it for like half if we wouldn't have gotten it.
Right, so that was the goal, we don't really need, going, sometimes going after additional funding and just...
Cost your own stuff.
Yeah, uh, so I, that was the goal here is to do, I spoke with our regional advisor who suggested that we look at it this way as well, rather than go through the framework.
Are we starting, you know, it's, um, are we on track to get the rec director in January?
We have to have that agreement, and that's, I believe we're having, yeah, a week or two to, to look at that, uh, agreement, so that has to be in place.
That would be good to have the rec director involved in.
Oh, absolutely.
The rec, the rec director.
But we can't submit for that grant opportunity until that intergovernmental agreement is in place.
Right, right.
So we can do all the preliminary work and once we have that intergovernmental agreement in place, pending the view obviously by both, uh, New Freedom Borough and Shrewsbury Township, then we can hit submit on that opportunity.
Who developed that? We believe you, don't we, the intergovernmental...
Yeah, Todd and Andrew have...
What's, what's the whole go?
It's a grant.
Isn't it just a matter of signatures now?
It hasn't been approved, uh, we wanted to make sure to try to get, uh, Todd and I met a couple months ago, redlined, uh, existing examples, their office put together a clean version, I went through and made some other changes, Todd went through, so we're just gonna meet now to make sure everybody's on the same page before taking it back to their respective boards.
You'll see it in December's meeting or November's meeting when they...
I would, yeah, I would hope that happens.
Yeah, that'd be good.
At, at what timeline do decisions like the size of the board and make up like that need to be made?
They are in that intergovernmental agreement as well as the bylaws, so there will need to be approval by those boards on the agreement and the bylaws.
By the, by the rec or the...
By, by the council or supervisors.
It would be really, really good if we could have rec here when we discuss it and prove it, so that they have as much input, we'll get them a copy.
I was gonna say, can we get a, get a copy for board?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and at this point, and, and this is just what was said at the September twenty-sixth meeting, I believe, is, it's just preliminary at this point, we still have some things to work out, so there's no point in presenting that information, um, until we have a better idea of how are things wanting to align.
Yeah, I'm just from my own edification about forming something like this, curious to find out.
Yeah, and again, recreation will still happen in New Freedom, it's just under a different umbrella and all the programs and everything will be the same. Hopefully it works out.
Yeah, same time.
Thank you.
Questions?
I have a question, um, I see that you guys are going through the unfinished business, but I was here at the September twelfth meeting, I don't see anything...
Yeah, that's why I looked at you, cause I thought you were going to stand up during public comment and, and you didn't, but, um... Let me think about that for a minute. Uh, someone coming up? Yeah, I hate to hold her here then until, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I just missed it on the agenda, I just, yeah, I just... Yeah, we'll have, we'll have to wait.
Well, I was gonna, we were gonna present what we came up with, but, um, it would have to almost be a, a committee report at this point. Um, okay, next item is Sou- Southern Regional Police Department, third amendment, I, we don't really need to talk about it unless you think there's something...
There's, there's nothing new, we're, we're waiting for Glanrod to...
That's good enough. Zoning, uh, sign regulations, update requests.
We should have that in draft form for council's review, uh, at the November meeting. Just going through again and trying to make sure it complies with the current districts of New Freedom.
So just stay on the agenda till next one? On the stormwater channel and North Constitution permits?
Yeah, so we did have, um, since the last meeting, uh, Arrow went out, they did, uh, a little bit of survey information and overlaid what was provided in the land development plan, provided that information back to DEP. DEPs basically came back and said, uh, we see that the sediment has accumulated more than fifty feet from the end of the culvert, uh, again, fifty feet is kinda that magic number where if it was less, less than or equal to, we can go and make that, uh, make that excavation without having to get it permitted. So it actually extends about ninety-five feet, uh, from the end of the pipe in order to get positive grade and, and remove that sediment. DEP came back and said, uh, because of that, we'll need a water obstruction and encroachment individual permit, which is a joint permit application. They're indicating that it should be eligible for a small project permit as long as there's no impact to wetlands. Uh, there are wetlands in that area, but it doesn't impact from that culvert, from that stormwater channel, so...
I'm sorry, we're talking about the hidden property, okay, just wanted to make sure.
So that is the next step in that process.
Is that wetlands because it really is wetlands or is it wetland because that calls the wetland and I think...
At the stormwater channel?
Yeah, there's part of it that's got signs, wetlands, do you know?
No, that's, that's...
But that's not a D and G wetlands, I think Berken team just said, we're gonna call this wetlands, am I correct?
No, it was just noted on the plan, it was, it was wetlands before.
That was the plan, okay, okay. Actually, when I was going to put a softball field on that property, um, DEP came in and they defined where the wetlands were. They're, they're, they're pretty much where they're indicated, I mean, it just, so, yeah.
But that, that area that they have, uh, signed is not impacted by this swing.
It's on the other side of the stream.
Oh, it could...
It's on Berken team's side of the stream where the, where the apartments are, yeah.
So that is, that's unfortunately what DEP is...
So we're looking at during the work probably when?
We have to apply for the permit and wait for the D and P to reveal it.
That's six months?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was on site at the end of September, I went down through, the backyard of the property, uh, was mowed, it was not soft, the channel still had water in it, but there was really no, I walked around the whole area, there was no issue as far as soft ground, as far as not being able to mow, as far as ruts or anything, so...
How much rain had we got, cause I went down and sump it up halfway up my knee.
Absolutely, yeah, when it's raining, it's a problem, but it's not an issue that is...
And there was no way they could mow it.
Well, it was mowed...
When I was there, was it?
Yeah, I had, I took pictures and documented everything, um...
So they're a little happier, maybe?
Well, I mean, we, we did have...
Be nice if it was just done.
Five days of rain after that, uh, which I, again, it definitely impacted the condition of the property, um, but this is the direction that we need to go, and...
This, this is a good example of, you know, not quite no good deed, but if you just wanna get something done, see it pretty simple, you gotta get a DEP permit, and it takes time. I mean, the people who are here probably don't understand that, they don't deal with it every day, but, you know, this is the kinda stuff that happens and this is, these are the rules you have to play by, if you don't play by DEPs rules, you're gonna be getting fined, and then you're gonna do it anyway, so, yeah.
So because it's more than fifty feet, DEP says you have to get a permit, basically what it was down to.
Correct.
And when are you applying for that?
That's already in process.
In process.
Yeah, Arrow's working on putting together that application.
Takes up to six months?
I would figure a minimum of six months.
They don't do emergencies, do they?
And then it comes through, then it's approved, then...
There's the emergency, well, most of those processes, you can, you can spend that in application, but the way this, the way things are moving, that's four years, six months is a swamp. I'd say if you get it in six months, you should be happy to get it.
Exactly, right.
You could, you, you could, if you wanted to, use your phone and call Christian Phillips Hill and tell her the address and see if she can expedite it once the permit is, and see...
I, I can do that.
Take a positive flow, yeah, and that's just one percent, which is, which is all you need, but you gotta be saying one percent. I, I do think that, you know, if we're able to obtain the permit and get the work done, that the council needs to consider, uh, looking at that property and getting a stormwater easement from the Penn Dot right away on Constitution Avenue to the daylight of this pipe. This pipe was not put in by the borough, uh, but now it's a borough problem, so... I, I think that, that there's a problem in the future, we're able to access that from Constitution Avenue as well as the, the daylight, the end of the pipe and clean it out and, and make sure it's sufficient, but you shouldn't be going in there doing this work without an easement to go back and do this again, or repair that pipe.
I was gonna say this, there's no easement there now, who's responsible for the pipe, if there's a problem, if the pipe collapses or something else, it's like...
So you start that process now to get that? So you're not waiting another year?
The right away?
Yeah, with, with Penn Dot, you're waiting that year.
We'll do that in conjunction, basically, we just need to have a exhibit put together with an agreement, um, it will get recorded on, uh, the DE of both properties, if, I think it's right around the property line, um, so it would be most likely a twenty-foot wide wide easement and that could span both properties, so we would have to...
Probably should have the work done so you could do it as is, as built, rather than...
Yeah, we would extend that into the Berken team property as well for that easement.
So why does it become the borough's problem if it was done by an individual?
Well, we could back away from it, I mean, it's, it is possible to do that, right? I mean, we can just say, that's not really, since it is a stormwater problem, and it's almost the Penn Dot created, no?
No, no, Penn Dot would have not extended their pipe outside of the right way. And, and I believe, um, Miss Higgin, when he was, she was here, indicated that her grandfather put that pipe in from basically the Penn Dot right away, the whole way down to the end of that property, so again, this is not a borough-created problem. This was a problem that stormwater was directed from the end of that, uh, Penn Dot right away down off, basically onto someone else's property, uh, when that pipe was put in, so...
It just didn't matter until the property was actually built on, cause the water just ran on the other property, people's property. Okay, um, case ball, I'm so, I'm sorry, yes.
I just don't know the direction you guys are going, if my concern, was we on the next, um, agenda, is it already decided on?
If, if, well, you, you were gonna, yeah, um, I'm not sure how to approach this, how do I put, can I address her, her now or then?
I mean, we can, you can basically just go back to public comment, you're not altering the agenda.
All right, let's see that.
She was here.
With everyone's nod, um, okay, well, we have, uh, we can, we put together a committee with, uh, Inga Burnell and Dave, and the reason we have four was because Inga couldn't make it a couple of times, so we kinda took turns stepping in and stepping out. What, um, are you still calling yourself Accolades or?
No, same here.
Okay, it's the same company, just changed the name?
No, it's a different company altogether.
Okay, um, anyway, so she came and asked, uh, basically for funding for some of the issues for the, um, staffing and for plumbing in the basement and flooring and HVAC. And what I, and, and the rest of our group told her was that the, basically the funding was voted a year ago, June, to be used for, uh, public works in the sense that we wanted to do, it was allocated to funds for community projects to ben- benefit all of the citizens. I also mentioned to her at that time that they had already received, and again, not her, but the Accolades had received fifty-five thousand dollars, uh, from two, two different rounds of COVID money, and, uh, we asked her who owned it, owned the home, and the home is actually on a lease with an option to buy, but she's responsible for all maintenance. So in June, sure, I think she has to make a decision, is that correct? So the, the committee basically decided that this really wasn't, this is an ongoing systemic problem in the business model that she has, and it's not really a COVID issue per se. So given the fact that we've already allocated all of the funds that were available, there aren't any funds available for this, this project, and that was our, our decision, so...
Was any of that information from the October fifth meeting?
I'm sorry?
Did you re, did you reiterate the information that we talked about during our October fifth meeting? Cause that's what I initially presented September twelve, but we met again, just yourself...
Right, and you had asked for, yeah, at that, at that time, she had asked for, uh, funding, basically to add another staff member, um...
For just staff and for, for whole?
And it was, um, it was a fifteen thousand dollar funding for, uh, one staff member for, I think, six months.
Yeah.
And the intent there was to be able to add additional clients. But again, that's not really a COVID issue. But again, that's not really a COVID issue. I mean, if you're adding additional clients, it just means you're trying to grow your business or at least get it back to what it was before. And again, we don't have 15,000, and we would have to give $15,000 of taxpayer money to, to a private business. And, and while I.
It might not be in business.
Well, I mean, it's really, I mean, again, you know, these are the times I wish I was Bill Gates and could just write a check, but I, I can't give other people's money to a business, so. That's, that's again, kinda like where we're at.
So this is not from the ARPA fund? For COVID?
All the, the ARPA funds have all been allocated. There, there are no ARPA funds left that New Freedom Borough just has sitting in a bucket somewhere. The mon, the money's been allocated.
Have you, have you gone, have you addressed the different churches in the, in the area?
That's not really.
Or do you, do you have, do you have a manager, an accountant for your, like your budget?
I have an accountant.
That you could, that you could work with?
I was told that the ARPA funds were, could establish, help essential workers that, that were lost for COVID, during COVID, and that's exactly what happened.
They had $55,000 in COVID.
That has nothing, and I explained, I have, that was before me, I have nothing to do with that. There's a total.
Yeah, I understand that, but they got your COVID money and did something with it.
I mean, is she not entitled to, if it's COVID, is she not entitled to get government funding? That, that she could go forth and get some government funding?
Not at the, well, we don't have any available at the borough, at the borough level.
And I said, no, we are, we just.
County money or, or state money.
You came to the taxpayer's money.
I know there's still county money left, because I know somebody who just had money allocated. So I really think you need to be at the York County level with this, cause the money for New Freedom is, again, it's allocated to community projects. I really wish you luck, I really do. You do an important service, and I feel, feel sad that I can't write you a check, but I can.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have to stand up in this way. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Tasteful Occasions lease correspondence. And has everyone had a chance to peruse it a little? I mean, I understand what they're saying, that their, their lease included some things that they had to do. And I had two questions from it myself. Is, it says that they have to unlock the doors for tenants on the day of rentals, and we're going to be taking that into the borough office and doing it with a staff member, correct? All right?
When is that?
At the end of this lease, starting January 1st.
And, and we do have a meeting with Crime Interventional Lab, who handles the access control here at the borough office, as well as the treatment plant, to get a proposal to bring back to council to look at access control for the community center so we're able to regulate not only keys, but, but in this case rentals for, rentals of the building, that we can provide them an access card, which needs to be returned at the end, and it's only valid during the renting time, and there's not this need to constantly have somebody unlock and lock doors for, for different rentals and, and other events at the center.
You talking about same as a FOB?
Yep.
Yeah. We were looking, you said like $20,000, right, for that?
Well, yeah, that was my rough guess on, on doing a similar building out of another municipality, that that's about the cost. And, you know, you could use cards, and the cards need to be returned as part of, you know.
It'd be the same as a room key card, like when you go to a hotel. The only other question I have though is, is it said that they deal with the building's alarm system that goes off very often, and they're on call 24/7, sometimes in the middle of the night. Do we know, is this a problem? Are we getting notifications?
I get, I'm, I'm one, I get a notification every time the alarm goes off. It goes off now and then, but it hasn't been.
It's not like a huge.
It's not like four times a week or.
I receive instant text messages whenever that alarm is put in.
Cause the fire department gets it, and I'm on the fire department's.
So who's, who's going to go at 3:00 in the morning?
I'm still up.
When is the alarm set?
I'm sorry?
When is the alarm set?
Well, now it is. Right?
I'm just saying when, I've never known it to be set.
Well, you're talking about an alarm for.
That's, well, that's really for the senior center, not for the.
So you're talking fire alarms going off, it sound like you, door alarms.
No, I didn't.
This is a, you're so, okay, so that was confusing. I had no idea, so you're talking fire alarms.
Yeah, and I mean, you're dealing with all of those sensors that we've had issues with in the past, where you've got a little dust in them or fire crawls.
But who is going to do that? I mean, I know, I, I do, I do Veterans Park. It doesn't happen that often, and I don't think we're setting the alarm anymore, cause it hasn't happened at all this year. So, so I know that nobody's probably setting the alarm, but when it was being set, I would go. And sometimes I would be pleased, sometimes they would beat me.
Now, what are you talking about, the different, talking about setting alarm? What alarm are you talking about?
It's the burglar alarm.
So you're talking burglar alarm, but you're talking fire alarm?
Well, you're talking fire, but still, who's going to respond?
They're the same thing.
Right, yeah, I mean, somebody has to do something, there has to be some human input saying, yeah, there's not a fire, or is the fire company going to do that?
Does the state regional respond?
They do, but they can't get in.
But they can't, yeah, they don't have a key.
Isn't there gonna be a lockbox, a knox box on there?
Well, that, they have to, the knox box in that case should be used, just for an alarm, should be used as a last resort. They still need to be able to visually see, and they're not gonna go bust the door down.
It's kinda like if my fire alarm goes off at my house.
I have a lock at the time, so I don't think that would be a problem.
Well, I mean, it's kinda like if the fire alarm goes off at my house, if, if, if I don't call the alarm company right away, then the fire company shows up, and they are not allowed to just leave. They have, you know, I could even say, you know, we were cooking something with grease, and they'll say, yeah, well, I wanna look, make sure you don't have a fire somewhere. So, you know, I'm just saying, who's going to do that? You know, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
I don't, I don't really think that there needs to be someone on site.
Like, I'll do the same thing that I've always done. When that comes through, that there's an alarm at the community center, I'm in my car and I'm there no matter what, to check it out or meet somebody.
You and I aren't gonna live forever, though.
You know?
Are you talking in January, are you talking today?
In January, that's what I'm saying, we just need to know how it's gonna happen.
Mr. President.
So every time there's a power loss and the alarm goes off, I don't have to get up and go do that anymore? You'll do it?
Me, personally.
Because that's another alarm that goes off when there's a power loss.
Right.
I'm the one that goes up and turns those off at 3:00 or 2:00.
Why does it go off? Well, then we have somebody that's ready to go.
All right, so you've been doing that, then?
Been doing it for 15 years.
How often does that happen to you, Donnie?
I do it by a dozen times a year.
Once a month you're doing that?
Uh, something that just all depends, like storms, like we have heat waves and they don't have enough power, it sets the alarm off.
Why is that set it off when that?
It's just power, it's some power loss.
Are they on, is that on battery backup or?
Um.
That's not.
It's more of a phase loss than.
Yeah, it's like phase loss. So you have to answer alarm that you, you have to answer the alarm that it is a phase loss, that you acknowledge it, otherwise it keeps going back to the alarm company, it'll keep calling somebody to reset it.
All right. But we need to figure that out. I mean, that's, I, I'm just pointing it out as something that we need to, you know. Okay.
Who wrote this letter?
What?
Who wrote this letter?
I believe Kim Hernandez.
It kinda talks in like the third person, but it comes up, it sounds like somebody else is writing it in parts, so I didn't know if.
I assume she wrote the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, there's more, there's more power loss alarms up there than there is fire alarms. I can tell you that right now.
Yeah.
Well, this town's always been known for power loss since I was, since we were kids, remember?
Oh, yeah.
Days and the times where we spent a lot.
Yeah, the thing's just real sensitive, that it kicks it off though, when it gives an alarm.
I don't have any other questions, is anyone else?
And the thing's beat me, you know, so a lot of times, what happened before, when they had people that said they wanted to be the one to take care of the alarm, and they didn't take care of it, I was always like the fifth person in line, because verse 4 didn't wanna do it. I go through and drive off to 3:00 or 4:00.
Yeah, it's definitely something we'll have to.
Yeah.
Make sure we add it on. Work.
Did you? Did you do anything with, did you print a new chapter 30 thing or not?
No.
You didn't?
No, because this is what was authorized for the council.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda is the Chapter 30 Amendment.
There's no, this was just, I realize this is just correspondence, but there's no follow-up action from council or lease, correct?
Well, I, I don't think so. I mean, we have a lease, the lease has been approved. I don't think, I mean, her, I didn't see anywhere in her letter where she asked for any lease. There was no counter, in other words, is what I'm trying to say.
I believe you're correct.
So if, since there is no counter, I don't see any action for council, since we already have an approved lease. So unless something comes back to us.
We presented the lease and they signed it?
No, then we presented the lease and they're not having, but.
The lease wasn't presented, but I have not received it.
I think that's what caused the, the, the explanation of what, and I think the, I think the big thing that, that she was upset about is that, I think we were tossing around that they paid 390, but they don't really pay 390, they really do pay 790 and then $400 of that as a agreed-to fee for showing and cleaning and opening doors and whatever.
Can I get an updated lease for both of those, since they were, they were changed, right? From what we were given last month, there's changes?
There, there were changes to what we talked about, the one year, there was some insurance language change, and then we verified the rhythm, so, yeah, that was all changed and sent to Tasteful Occasions and the Senior Center.
Have they signed them?
No.
The Senior Center?
Senior Center, we did meet with them and went over a couple suggested changes. They asked for a couple of changes, so we'll be putting that and bringing that back.
Do they now, do they want the additional room or not? That was, the board member was here at the last meeting, and she didn't quite understand.
Yeah, they would, they would like to.
To what the price would be, not to include it really in the lease. Where all of that would have to go.
Got a little off topic here, but basically they would like to flip-flop rooms. So yes, they would like 201, but they don't want, I'm apologize, it might be 205.
That's Lion's Room, right?
Okay, then 203. Right, they just wanna flip-flop them.
We gotta start using the names in any room.
Lion's Room. And, and they, they asked for some other changes, again, that has to come back to council for your review. One of their main concerns is that this comes in the middle of their budget year. So they would like consideration to match July 1st to June 30th.
There are the government fiscal year, not a, or?
Non-profit, yeah.
What lease are you speaking now?
Senior Center.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, that's why I said. So again, we're working with them, we met with them, listened to their concerns. We will bring that all back to council for your review and other consideration, but.
And we could just put them all month to month until they're, if they wanna go to a fiscal year, right?
My personal opinion is I can understand that they're concerned because of hitting in the middle of their budget year. They've already been allocated those dollars from the county and the state, so I think they have a valid argument. And I think they have an argument to ask for a, a six-month extension and then, and then accept the terms of renewal lease, which my understanding is they're willing to do. They also would like more time to be notified that the borough would cancel the lease, that their concern is they can't make it out of there, and they have a lot of, lot of items they, they would need a place to go, so three months is a concern for them. They ask, you know, possibly even up to a year to give them proper notice. And again, when you look at the assets that they have in the building and the need that they would have to go somewhere else and find a space, I, I can understand that request. But again, we'll, we'll put all that in, into a new lease, give a summary of the requested changes and bring it back hopefully for the November, for your review, so.
To this view.
Again, I don't, my personal feeling is I don't think anything that they're asking for is really out of line, especially dealing with the non-profit that provides a service to the community, so.
Yeah, great, 100%.
Once they're both signed, I'd like a copy of, once, once they're signed, and then.
I'll be back.
So, while we're talking about it, did you contact our insurance to let them know that there's a cater in there 24/7?
Yeah, we're actually.
They already know, or?
My understanding is they already know. We are currently working on all the renewal documents for the insurance, so we're gonna have that discussion when we sit down and make sure that it's specifically named in there. My understanding is it is already named, as they were made aware in the past, that.
And were those seven to 10 propane tanks removed from outside the community center?
No. Yeah, I was, the meeting I had was after, after last council meeting, they were there.
Kim, Kim and I were talking earlier, and you know how they have the cage kind of things for the exchange of tanks, like at Rudders and Walmart and whatnot? That's what they need, they need something that protects the tanks, and it probably should be moved to the dumpster side of the building where it's not in the parking lot.
They use them for their.
Yeah.
So they're full, just sitting there?
I think they sit them out and.
People don't sit them, they're full and sitting there?
We don't know that they're full.
I don't know what they have, but they need to be put away, they can't just sit out there.
My, my thought was, you, you, with everything that's been going on in town, I told Andy, it all takes as a kid to go up there, open it up, is this empty? Light it a lighter, and the next thing you know, it's.
They don't work like that, there's a safety valve in there. The, the new style of tanks, you can open them and they won't do anything until there's a connection.
Well, and these kids can just knock the whole top off, like just like a scuba tank, I mean, one of those.
They need, they need protection.
If I remember, if I remember correctly, when those kind of bottles, anything that you have like that with gas or anything that can possibly explode, they have, I mean, it's been all, it's been under, I forget what that covers, but you're, it's against the law to have them stored in the wrong areas. Plus, you gotta have everything chained, like chained up or locked up so nobody can get to it. Because I do remember that we got in trouble where I, where I was with that. They came in and they said, well, you can't do this.
And I will say the fire company's not real pleased that they're there because it's, it's a fire hazard and it's really like.
I'll send an email tomorrow, that way it's documented and answered.
Or they could put them in the cage thing, is that a way they, it's got them?
Purchase a cage at their expense.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Or whoever they're buying their gas from, I'm sure they get through a lot of gas. They supply Rudders and all these other places, maybe they put one in for them, since they're buying it all the time.
I mean, it should have proper ventilation, so you can't really enclose it in a shed. So you would have the ventilation and you would have a protection from getting hit.
The only other question I have is, is I've noticed that all stores are putting safety ballards in front of these cages.
I think just a plain good idea anyway, but I wonder if the insurance would require additional protection like that. Donnie had a question.
That's just what I was gonna say, the insurance company can identify the danger, it's like our gas pump out here.
Yeah, I would, I would say.
Or you just don't need to be there.
Yeah, not there is a good.
Well, where are they gonna put them, unless they take them with their house?
It's not your problem.
I know they, well, I guess.
It's, it's, I mean, they could put a cage, a cage around the side near the dumpster, that would be fine. I mean, it's an easy. It's, it's, I mean, they could put a cage, a cage around the side near the dumpster, that would be fine, I mean, it's an easy sol- solution, it might, it might cost a little bit of money. Um, next item is the approval of the ordinance amending chapter thirty, um, Kim and I got together, and Davey and Kim and I got together, and we're trying to put something together that the language makes everybody happy, so, um, the, the first thing that would be done would be where it says, "In the manager's sole discretion," we would strike that.
Could you have changes?
Has to be re-advertized, right?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
But would it be better to, to table it and come up with the revision or re-present?
Well, we already have the revision, you could print it, we could postpone it in the agenda.
What, what did the advertising cost, approximately?
Um-
Less than an engineering fee.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say for an ordinance, but just a single ordinance, um, I, I don't think that in this case it was more than a hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so we're looking at, let's say another hundred and fifty dollars to re-advertise.
Like the finding, yeah. How do you have it?
I, I don't have it right, but I saw it in the report.
Yeah, no, we're not, um, anyway, here, here it is, I can send it to you and you can print it, if we wanna look at it.
We can't do anything anyway, because we haven't advertised, right?
Well, we have, we have to advertise.
We can approve the re-advertized.
The, um, here's the order confirmation, it was ninety-six dollars. And that's just for that ordinance.
So, do you wanna print this, or, I mean, you, you did, you got this, right?
Can you print it from your phone?
Oh, okay, great. And then the other change was, um, I, in, in the actual section where it talks about going to meetings, we struck planning commission zoning hearing board and new freedom borough authority, since the new freedom borough authority doesn't exist anymore. You thought that would-
Yeah. It says he may attend, it does not say he must attend, so if, say Wade, for some reason wasn't here, you know?
Or it was important and council wanted to, uh, direct him to go to a meeting, that we can do that, too. So I'll wait till we get, till we get that. So the next item is ordinance amending chapter one eighty-three, salvation and recycling.
Uh, yeah, this is just, just an update, uh, Dave and I have worked, um, since the last meeting to try to look at coming up with an ordinance, amending the current ordinance to align that with the contract. So, uh, Dave did provide a draft last week, and, uh, I need to review that and make sure that it complies, so that'll be on the agenda, continue on the agenda until the November meeting at this point.
Do we wanna review your table?
That's under, is a business.
Oh, that's a different one, okay, sorry. Okay, so that'll be in November.
Can we, how many savvy citizen, uh, people do we have?
Uh, three hundred and some, I think the last count was five hundred and, I think it was five hundred and ninety-six.
Is that new freedom residents, though, or is that just?
Not subscribers, yeah.
Can you break that down?
You can, I, I don't wanna say I'll can, I'm gonna say-
I know.
It might be mid-four hundreds would be actual, have indicated that they're residents, the rest are-
Can we send out a survey to what they would like, with three options?
We're not one-
Well, I'm, well, we'll talk later.
Okay, next item is consider the approval of the low bid from Liberty Restoration and Construction for the Borough Office Roof Project.
Right, Emma?
Oh, I got it over here. I just misplaced it.
Yeah, I dropped my whole packet.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the low bid for the roof replacement.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, discussion?
Uh, we need to decide about the alternative, one and two.
So it's an additional, so it's?
Alternative one would be an additional fourteen thousand, five hundred forty dollars to save the excess.
To the sixteen, the top?
So it's ninety mil instead of the sixty mil?
Correct.
What's the lifespan, is there, do we know a difference in lifespan or expected lifespan?
You know what the current one is?
Well, it's what, forty years, yes, how long's the building been here?
Twenty, twenty?
Yeah, most of your rubber roofing is, is-
Is number one?
Twenty-five.
Well, it's ninety mil.
Is, we've got two different types of roof, right, one over the, overhang at the police-
The overhang shingles right now, but it's, it would be rubber.
Up on, in the, the middle section is all rubber roofing, and then out the sides and over the carpet is, is shingles, this is replacement of everything.
But this is all rubber?
Well, up into the peak.
Are those all shingles?
Yeah, up into the peak is shingles, and then the flat is rubber, yeah.
That's why I hired somebody to do that, so.
So all three of these are different things, you can choose to add one, two, or all three, is that right?
The third one is just an allowance, what we ask the contractor to provide is the amount of decking that could possibly be damaged is unknown. Rather than them put in just a price per sheet, we ask for them to, and, and then basically mark that up, we ask them to provide us a price ahead of time, so that if they do need to replace more than a hundred square feet of plywood decking, that we have the price per square foot for them to do that. Uh, and that's important when you're doing projects like this, because otherwise, they could come in and say, well, that piece of plywood was-
A billion dollars.
You know, instead of, instead of a four-by-eight sheet, in this case, uh, you know, thirty-two, uh, square feet cost him, let's say seventy dollars, they could charge five hundred dollars, so you really, so this just locks in a price, so don't, that doesn't need to be included in your, uh, in your motion for approval, this is just them providing that price so we can have it in the future. Alternative one and two would be an additional to the base bid.
Both, or one, or the other?
Uh, yes, that's correct, you don't need to choose them in conjunction, they can be separately together, one, not two, two, not one. Uh, two is basically just to provide vents into the, uh, four different sections of-
Just to make it cooler in the attic?
Yeah, there already is a soft fit, um, you know, new, if you're building this new, there would be some kind of forced ventilation, um, I don't know that any of us really feel that this is, this would be necessary, these are the, the stacks that have the-
Why don't they put a fan in it?
Well, the problem is you have that, that adding a section off into four different sections, that's why they're saying about providing four different ones, so you have to put four different fans in or four different, uh, circulation points in.
So you're saying it's alternate one?
My suggestion would be to add alternate one, um, based on longevity.
I amend your motion?
What is, what is the difference in longevity?
I, I received an email late last week, let me see if I can pull that up.
But it is shingles.
Shingles and rubber.
And the shingles stand up to what wind? We're gonna echo all the wind down through here.
I mean, they're an architectural shingle.
Okay, so mine are warranty up to a hundred and sixty miles an hour.
Um, that would be in the spec idling.
They're more than adequate for what we are, the wind shear that comes down off of Coldwood Point and Ryan's House.
I can't find anything that tells me what, um-
Yeah, the recommendation, uh, from warehouse would be to accept alternate one.
Alright, then I'll, I'll, uh, amend my motion to, uh, include alternate one.
And we're automatically approving the, uh, square foot of plywood roofing, is that included?
That's just a number in the-
Just, yeah, I know, but that's being approved with that motion.
You really don't have, yeah, I mean, you don't really have an option because you're accepting a base bid, which is-
Right, does too.
Yeah.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Puzzled, by no design? Consider approval of payment request number six.
So, if you caught this, uh, you'll notice that we skipped application for payment number five. Application for payment number five was made by Lauer Construction, however, is being held by Warehouse because they still have not provided us all the closeout documents as well as the O M manuals. So until we get that, we are still holding, um, we're holding about twenty-four thousand dollars at this time, so.
Okay.
I'm not sure why those documents are not being provided, um, because everybody's anxious to get it closed out.
Yeah. Okay, I would entertain a motion to pay payment number six in the amount of one thousand one hundred forty-six dollars and sixty cents.
So moved.
Okay.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Puzzled, by no design? Okay, refuse to recycle contract bids.
So going back to that, can we send out a survey to citizens saying, these are your three options, you only pick one, two, or three, just to get a taste?
What's this for?
For trash, going up hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, what are the options, just to see?
Well, there's only two, right, and so one, one time a week or two time a week?
Yeah, for, for either, uh, three-year or five-year, you know, there's a big, you know, it's been two million or four, five million.
Yeah, I mean, I, you're welcome to do that, I'm not sure of the, you know, what your rate of return will be on that, um, but it's, it's an option, I mean-
Don't you think it'd be a big shock if the third way, hey, we're going to one time a week now?
Well, um-
And does this include one bolt guy on Friday?
Yeah.
Yes.
Then you have to notify them, right?
For all, for each?
Well, you always really were supposed to, if it was a refrigerator or-
Containment free, yeah.
So you would have, like, for the couch, you would have to, you know, police notify them, you know?
That is correct, that's how the contract reads, my name's Joel Washok, I'm with Penn Waste.
Hi, Joel, you better run.
I'm sure he's used to it later, yeah.
Nice, I would have a question for you, I've heard that, and I wrote this right here, our performance for our recycling is factored into our rate, is that true?
Our, the more that our residents recycle, the more we're able to apply for, uh, recycling performance funds, so it doesn't really impact as far as the contract, what it does is lessens the amount that we will have, so-
Who decides that and how?
The governor.
Who decides what?
How well we're doing, who, who, who knows, I mean?
They have the way, the way-
We provide tonnage each, uh, is it annually here?
It's annual, yeah.
We provide a tonnage, we track of that every time we collect material, uh, we report that to the borough, the borough then reports that to D E P, and D E P administers grants based off of how well they view the borough's performance.
Yeah, yeah, so the more recycling, uh, now, a couple of years ago, they kinda changed that, uh, they increased the amount that is classified as residue or when people put in, uh, recycling things that are not recyclable materials. So that was trying to increase the longevity of that program as well, they changed the funding formula so that those funds were around, around for longer, but it does help to reduce, and, and, you know, it might be a couple bucks a year on every bill, but it's important that we're encouraging recycling.
Would you make a note to please put that in our newsletter?
I think we already talked about, yeah.
You guys put out a great thing on your webpage and on Facebook, which I stole and shared to people about what to, what to recycle, what not to recycle, how to.
My opinion is that's always a good one-page filler in newsletters, just take that flyer and throw it in there, so.
And we focus on a bunch of different things, one was on, uh, lithium bi-, uh, lithium ion batteries.
Well, didn't you just have a fire, major fire?
Yes, we did, at the recycle center, uh, in February, we had a major fire, shut down the facility, um, because the battery got through the process. Um, and got into our cardboard bunker and just lit the whole thing up, so, um, it should be open again in, uh, early next year, though, so that's, that's a positive.
Uh, but I, I guess just to circle back, we did open bids at nine o'clock this morning, uh, we received bids from Penn Waste and Republic Services.
But they didn't bet you it was being, uh, twice a week?
Yeah, option one was twice a week, option two was once a week, Republic Services did not bid for, uh, option one, which was twice a week, um, so you have the bids there from Penn Waste, however, they were able to submit bids for once a week in option two. Both options contained, uh, three and five-year contracts. And then these sheets break down-
Please don't.
Uh, option one and two, and then the last sheet, uh, I kind of broke out, we can discuss that a little further, uh, selected the, the five-year contract from the apparent lower bid, which is Penn Waste, and then kind of did a rate analysis of what we need to charge the residents, uh, in the next five years, uh, based on once-a-week collection being the, the lower of the two. If you recall, during our preliminary budget summary, what I had looked at was twenty-five percent increase, uh, both on the revenues and expenditure side, so this first sheet and then second sheet does indicate that twenty-five percent increase, which would take the quarterly charge from eighty dollars a quarter to a hundred dollars a quarter.
Where, where do you see twenty, where's twenty-five percent?
Well, it was seven, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand seventy-five in the budget, post-budget, right?
That was in the budget.
That's what we've budgeted, it's seven hundred and thirty-five.
It was, yeah, it was, uh, it's in here as twenty-five percent increase on revenues and expenditures.
Mm-hmm, for seven hundred and thirty-five, but it's really gonna be closer to eight hundred, is that what we're looking at?
Correct.
If we go with once a week, we're actually, I mean, you know, even if we take, doesn't matter what you take, but three-year or five-year, but you're only looking at eleven percent increase, right?
Right, and the, the chart at the bottom, under once a week, you know, shows a, a very high fund balance going into those years, I don't think that that's necessary, um, so that's why I did the third sheet, which breaks down, being you will reduce that fee from, say you look at once a week, you do the five-year contract, you would need an approximately ten-dollar increase the first year, the third year, and the fifth year.
What if we try that and it just doesn't work, we, then where do we go?
We try what, once a week?
Well, but I, I think what, I think what you need to remember is uh, a lot of municipalities are going to once a week. You're going to be providing the resident with a ninety-six gallon toter and a sixty-four gallon toter for recycling.
One, are they allowed one, or can they have two?
You have one, you can get a lot in a ninety-six gallon toter for trash.
People have six people in their house.
Do you wanna, yeah, I believe my understanding would be.
They couldn't fit, they couldn't fit all their stuff now in, uh, twice a week.
Well, that's, it, it's.
The ninety-six gallon toters are just a standard toter, right?
Yeah, it's the standard size, so.
I mean, mine's sitting at the end of my driveway right now, it's about, it's about eighty percent full. And Joey wasn't home this week. I'm just trying to figure it out.
You don't even have a family, I mean, kids, you know.
Yeah, not any kids.
Four, five, six people.
Not any kids, kids on the canteen. Neighbors have five kids and they, they got five containers, reg-, you know, the regular garbage containers out twice a week.
Can you estimate how tall this is, kind of just give me a visual of, uh, with the lid that goes like that attached to it?
Yeah, with the tash.
The standard, yeah, it's what they have sells or.
So my understanding is with the truck, it would basically be an automated truck would still come and then there'd be another truck with a loader?
So basically what we were looking to do is to have both trash and recycling streams automated, which, because both.
Would you mind coming up here so we can get you a microphone and really get it on there so people, when people listen to the video that watch this?
So, yeah, we would plan on running both trash and recycling, uh, automated, which is just the one-man truck with the automated arm that comes out and collects the, the container, the, the toter, picks it up, drops it in the, the truck and just moves along. As for the bulk, the large item that you get for the, for the contracted, it's supposed to be scheduled, so we would send it in a different truck, which is a, we call a steak body truck, that just comes in and lifts, or takes those materials and, um, it's a scheduled process, then we can just be more efficient with that, just go directly to those houses, have them go along with their day. So, yeah, basically it'd be mostly automated.
What would you do on like South Front Street where there's cars parked and, you know?
Baltimore.
Yeah, I mean, you're, I mean, you know I like you, right? But you're, you're missing them now, I mean, you know, my, my stepdaughter is, is constantly not getting her trash picked up because the guys don't walk down the sidewalk and lift it over the cars because the cars are parked. And they miss it, you know, so how are you, what are you gonna do, like, would they have to put the trash on the other side of the street, or?
I mean, I would have to address that with our operations department, I can't really speak for how they would plan on doing that, I'm just the contract guy, but.
But if you got one guy on the truck, I'm just saying, on those situations where.
They would have to, I mean, if it was a one-man truck, they would have to get that collected somehow. So I, I would have to get with them on how they would plan on doing that, but.
Or if, or if the wind kicks up and it blows over a can, you know, something would happen.
I mean, the ninety-six gallon cars do withstand pretty decent winds.
But we're gonna have two cans out per house, because it'll be recycling and a trash at one time, so if you got ten homes, you got twenty out there.
Yeah.
Correct.
Could you, could you put it on the, on the, on the alley?
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Because that's what Conrad does in his house.
Only if, only if it would work with, you know, if this is awarded, we'd work with the operations team to make sure that that truck can safely travel down that alley.
That would be, that would be hard on that little alley behind, you know?
Yeah, if that's an option, we can work with the homeowners and the operations team to, to make that happen, but that's probably gonna be on a, a route or, or street-by-street basis.
I'm sorry?
What would happen out here on this?
Yeah, what would happen on Con-, yeah, what would happen on Constitution? That's another street where there's parking on both sides of the street. How would you pick up the trash? I know the mayor's car's parked there when you guys come, so.
Well, what, yeah, what we'd have to do is we all kind of move back so some, everybody has, but a ninety-six gallon, I don't.
Well, plus you want to be able to swing in, you'd have to leave a large enough space for them to actually pull in, lift the cans up and pull back out.
Oh, but again, all, all of this, this is in the contract, I mean, this, these are things that we're gonna have to work out. But this is to help us not get an even larger increase, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, these are things that we have to work out, and that's really, I mean, we'll work those things out internally and with the residents and working with Penn Waste if they're awarded, but I, I think we need to focus on.
Well, I have one more question on that. Like coming into town, right, by the song shop, you know, there's, some people do park there, but I mean, people are doing thirty-plus miles an hour, I mean, and there's, there's homes there, I mean, it's gonna be out the street.
Or what?
You know, right Franklin, like Franklin on Constitution coming up to Main Street, that section there, you know?
How's it any different than now?
Well, I mean, I think that is different than over here on this road or singer, I mean, there's so much traffic that comes in on Constitution into New Freedom with those homes that are right there once, before you come up to Main Street.
Okay.
That, these toters will be out the street?
No, they would still be at the curb line or wherever they're placing their material right now. The, the automated trucks, they can reach out like twelve feet to get this material, it's not like it needs to be right on the, the, the street line in order to get it.
Does it go out, I've seen them, they, does it go out, go down and grab it, or does it hook on to the?
No, it, it, it goes out and grabs it, but it's just mostly just, just straight out and just, it has like a, like a grip on it and it closes around the side of the car, dumps.
So, so I go live in New Freedom, um, for you guys, I, uh, I do have the toters with, they use the automated truck. The only requirement, as far as I understand, is that you just need three feet of clearance, like around the toter. So if you park your car far enough to three, you know, the three feet of clearance, 'cause like for me, the only time I haven't, I, the only time I haven't had my trash picked up by the automated truck was I put it too close to my mailbox one day, so.
Well, you're gonna be on Franklin Street getting course three feet apart, you're not, it's not happening, same thing on South Front Street. Not gonna get.
I mean, again, these are things that we can address as we enter into the con-, or whoever would enter into the contract, because both haulers bid it this way. So we can address these issues and get this squared away.
Is this gonna be automated, uh, even if, either twice a week or once a week, that's gonna stay the same, right? That they're gonna be automated both ways anyway, so.
Correct, yeah, either way.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, say, what hap-, what happens if the resident does blank, we're not picking it up? If the resident?
Puts recycling in garbage or garbage in recycling? Or puts electronic device in garbage or, yeah.
Is that what they do now?
Yes.
Do you do that now?
Do residents do that?
Correct, yeah, we do not collect them.
So how, how do, what, I guess my question, how, for the toter versus how it is now, what, what changes in the, in the rules? I've gotta have it positioned this way, I've gotta make sure the lid's down, I can't, the lid can't be this much, I mean, are there things where you're gonna say, no, I'm not picking that up, we're passing by?
Basically, if you're not bringing the can out, like, we've had residents that will leave the, the can up by their house and expect us to go up there and get it. That's one reason why they're gonna do it, or if it's blocked by a telephone pole or something like that. And that's when we use our, we educate the residents, we have stickers that we can leave on the can and say, hey, please move this three feet from an obstruction, similar to what we were talking about before.
Wonder if it, I'm sure it would have to be turned a certain direction or the lid's not gonna go right, right?
It, it, there's definitely preferred way, and it, there, there is a hot stamp that is on the top of the lid of the trash can and recycle can that tells you which way to face it, um, but it will still be collected.
It's still.
Yeah, it's, it's, if it's not facing the right direction, we'll try to educate the resident from there, but it's not the end of the world, we're gonna take it care of.
What if you have ex-, I'm sorry?
Well, go ahead.
What if you have extra trash? What if you put out two toters?
Well, then in that case, I would say that would probably, I mean, that's a borough decision, obviously.
Well, I mean, again, that.
That should be a double service in my opinion.
They're only, they're gonna collect one service and if one service is a toter, that's what they're, at that address, I mean, they're gonna have, this is, there's, they're different than what we do now, if we have locations that have multiple collections, uh, you know, they might have two services and put twelve bags out.
We're limited to five now? Are you allowed to call in for an example? I mean, I'm almost thinking there needs to be an option three that says, what if I want two toters? But are you allowed to call in and say, you know, this week I have two, you know, I have extra bags, I'm gonna put out two toters?
Yeah, we wouldn't have a problem with doing that, the only thing is, um, they would just need to call in advance and pace, it wouldn't be through the borough at that point, it would be a separate thing between Penn Waste and the resident, whoever would schedule that.
Is that where you buy, some places they buy an orange bag or a different colored bag instead of?
Those are typically the ones that we do the billing in ourselves, Penn Waste handles the billing, but yes, that is.
I'm just wondering, like, you know, if it was a holiday or they knew they were gonna have a party or whatever, there would be a way to get their trash out. Oh geez, look at Christmas, yeah, that's what I'm saying, what, you know, how do you, how do you manage that?
I guess.
Go ahead.
Uh, just to interject, my experience, I live in a township that has a ninety-six gallon trash and a ninety-six gallon recycling. Uh, collection once a week, it's been like that for fifteen years. Um, I have a family of four and it is very rare, rarity, that I'm not able to get all my trash in that ninety-six gallon toter and recycling, so I understand I'm only four, there's families that are larger, but.
Cross the street seven.
I, I guess I don't quite understand that generation of that much trash for a family of.
I mean, I think the other thing to consider too is what size bins, you currently, I think they're thirty-two gallon recycle bins. You're gonna have double that capacity in recycling going forward, so it could, it would need some education on what's properly recyclable, but.
Might force people to recycle, I got room in this can.
And then if they're not recycling properly, then they'll get left there, you know?
So the, the lid, if the lid, if your trash can, the lid's up like this, because there's trash in there that's bulging from the top surface, are you still picking up that?
Yeah, now, yeah, we'll.
Like my, my mother's won't, where my mother lives, they won't, it has to be closed or they won't pick it up.
Okay, is that a Penn Waste contract, because the kids, okay, well, I can speak to my, my crew, right, operations department, but. No, the only thing that I'm really concerned about is whenever residents pile it on top of the trash can. We can't pick that up because then, basically, the, the crews are gonna have to get up and clean that up, or get out of the truck and clean that up at that point. Defeating the purpose of automated collection, really.
Sure.
If it's, if it's cracked open a little bit, we'll still pick that up.
Okay.
What happened with the people who, I see it, who walk the dog a lot, they, they just put trash out in a plastic bag now. If, I know they're supposed to put it in the can, and a lot of them don't do it, and it's probably yard waste, glass, grass clippings or something else, the bags are sealed up. So if they stick bags out there along with the toter, bags aren't gonna be picked up, right?
Correct, that they won't be picked up and we will, our crew should be stickering them and stating that it needs to be placed in the bag, or in the cart, rather.
But you can take a bag and put the bag in the toter.
Yeah, yeah, that's how it works, because.
I mean, the five grass clippings, they don't have a problem taking them if they're in the bag?
I have one, one request, um, would you please tell your people not to just throw the trash cans? I, you've missed my house several times, like corner house, and I, you know, I stopped them and talked to them and didn't understand, you had new people working, they didn't know the route because I was on the corner and everything, but throwing the trash cans, I had a new trash can and now the lid, you know, is, is, you know, was attached to it, now that doesn't work, so they threw it, and then the wind came and pushed it all the way down the street, 'cause there's a little bit of an incline, you know? So, I mean, it's just, it's just a courtesy, you know, we are courteous, I, I organize my trash and then we should go both ways. I would appreciate that because I, I'm getting a little bit tired of chasing, y'all singer broke my trash.
With them on that, the thing that I would say is with the automated collection, there shouldn't be any throwing of cans.
Yeah, I mean, there is just no, no sense in doing that.
Again, back where my mother lives, was supposed, that she has this type of system and that truck broke her trash can.
Well, the, the cans in this contract, we provided by the hauler, so all the resident would need to do is call Penn Waste, we'll swap it out for a new can.
They have to buy the new can, the resident does, even though the truck broke it.
Yeah.
Is there a smaller?
So we would get it replaced at no charge if the truck breaks the can, yeah.
Is there a smaller version than that ninety-six? We've got some elderly people in this town, I don't think, I don't think they can handle that. I've seen them in different parts of the county, Ray's shaking his head, I don't, like Ray, he's got a bad back, I don't know if he can handle that ninety-six. It's on wheels, I mean, it's not. But that's still, they're heavy, mine's on wheels and it's a small one.
What's that? Do you have any comment of the public versus one day versus two days a week?
Well, the majority of the people I know are just tickled to death with the situation the way it is. They don't want it to change, and what's, what does this mean now? Instead of getting collected twice a week and allowed twelve containers, we're gonna get collected once a week with one container?
It's a big container. Twelve containers now, dude.
Six bags.
But the question was, are elderly, are elderly can't handle these containers? Well, okay, well, I'm sorry, hold on a second.
We down, we can't down.
Yeah, I mean. I don't have a time of mine, it's. All right, well, first of all, we haven't picked if we're going with twice a week or once a week, yeah, so, I mean, we could still do twice a week. And the containers, I mean, that was part of the, our, our bid specs, I mean, so we can't really go back and change that now, they've already bid, bid it this way. And that was done intentionally by council, I thought, so that we would get a cheaper rate, because if we use smaller containers, if they can't pick up mechanically, it's gonna cost a lot more. There's a possibility. Yeah, I didn't think we made a decision on which way, I thought we were gonna get a quote for both, not ways and then decide, was what we thought.
We can't do quotes, it's a request for bids, and that's the way, and we have to bid on whatever the municipality puts in front of the hauler.
Question?
Do we know about how much it will go up if we stay at two times a week?
Yeah, I, based on preliminary budget discussions, we included a twenty-five percent increase, that would take the quarterly charge from eighty dollars a quarter to a hundred dollars a quarter, however, that is not sufficient, uh, to fund the expenditures for even the first year, so, uh, you know, even at a hundred and two dollars, there would still be a deficit in the fund balance, so I would anticipate that that would need to be at least a hundred and five dollars.
And we're at seventy now.
Well, listen, if you go with a five-year contract, you're looking at by, at the fifth year, a seventy-five percent increase over what you're paying now.
Did we just take it?
If you go with the once a week, in five years, you're looking at a forty percent increase, I think it's a no-brainer.
We just took the throw the trash out.
I have one question, I know we have the two bids, how many trash collectors are there in York County?
We advertise it, not to bid it, so, I mean.
Two, that would be able to meet specification.
What's the specification?
The contract.
Picking up our whole city.
Are we able to look at Baltimore County, I mean, can you, can you, do you have Baltimore come to P A, or are you looking?
They would have to be licensed to do business there.
And basically the thing that you have to keep in mind is York County is flow-controlled, all with all.
Is that flow?
Flow-controlled, yes, it is, all waste within York County must go to the York incinerator.
Okay.
So.
I don't know what I'm asking.
I'm just saying, logistically, somebody coming up from Maryland to collect, would have to drive all the way up north to New York, basically, to dispose of waste.
Oh, they can't take it out?
Yeah, I was asking, I don't, I don't know, are there only two in York County, I don't know how many people pick up trash?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, sometimes you'll have Waste Management, which is another national company in the area, but pretty much, it's just Penn Waste and Republic Services in York County.
And what is in the contract on missed?
What?
On missed services, like if they miss so many on a street, there's a refund, what is it?
It's the same penalty language that was in the current contract, um, and, and pretty much the same, same language, so, you know, they have to be given the opportunity to rectify that, um, but then if it continues, then it's, it's a per dwelling thing. I believe it's twenty-five dollars per dwelling.
Well, is that gonna end up, I mean, all these rates are gonna end up, like, is that being increased from our current contract, the penalty?
It's cause of tipping, right?
No, no, it's, it's just the penalty section.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, you're asking, is this why or not?
No, no, I was asking, will the. No, no, I was asking, will the, will the penalty for missing go up?
No.
It will not go up.
What is it, five dollars?
Twenty-five.
Twenty?
I mean, oh, our cost for the, what we proposed to the borough in the, in the bid specifications breaks down on the once-a-week service, it's roughly, I wanna say twenty-eight dollars a month per unit. So, basically, that twenty-five dollar fine, that would be for one miss per resident, covers that entire month of service, basically.
Why did I only give five dollars?
Because, well, that was in, that was in negotiation.
Okay, all right.
Panel and everything. And plus we took the number of units divided by the fee and it turned out to be five dollars.
Do we know what day of the week this will be? Will it go to a one?
Friday.
Friday pickup.
All right.
That means all that is gonna sit there for a week, rotten in the sun in the summertime.
How many other, how many other municipalities are sticking with twice a week?
You gotta remember, we're, a lot of the.
He has, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
There are a couple municipalities, but, I mean, the, the thing that I, I would like to have you keep in mind is you've either got an eleven percent price increase on the once-a-week service or you've got almost a forty percent price increase on twice-a-week service.
I think we should go for once a week for five years.
I'd have to agree with that.
I, I just, I, I can't see telling the citizens they're gonna start out with a thirty-eight percent increase to forty-seven, to fifty-five, this is every year, to sixty-five, to seventy-five percent increase over five years.
Jesus.
That's, you know.
When do we, when do we have to do this?
It's ninety-six gallons of trash at a time, that's a lot, that's a lot of work.
When you said, was that made one year or something?
I just, I know, I talked to twelve people and they.
Out of twelve, they all wanted twice a week.
Well, I wanna make a.
The challenge used to be a forty percent increase.
I'm not, I'm also not trying to.
I saw twenty-five percent and thought.
I'm not trying to pressure you into making a decision tonight, but the, part of the contract is to provide mobile cards as part of the, to all the residents.
I'm sorry, mobile cards?
The toters.
Okay.
Um, I need to, in order to get this in January first, I need to make that order like a week ago. So, um, I, I just would like, hopefully, you can make a decision tonight just because of, if not, we won't have the mobile cards in time for the contract.
Did, did you guys have another?
No. Okay, it's the fall of the year, you're gonna have yard waste. You mean you're gonna take your yard waste and your normal waste and put it in one container once a week?
I don't think you're supposed to put yard waste up.
I mean, there's other alternatives to yard waste, but.
Well, what's the other alternative?
Combos or.
Well, we, we provide leaf collection and we provide brush collection services outside of this contract.
Yeah.
Like maybe some of the lawns and so forth.
Leaves are supposed to be out Mondays? I mean, they might not be.
That's.
Get, get them on Monday, but that gets started shortly next week.
Make the motion for once a year, once a week for the five-year contract?
On Fridays.
On Fridays?
Yeah.
Motion for once a week, five-year contract, pickup on Fridays.
Is that our only option, Friday, or can we just stay with Tuesday?
We ask the.
Still seven days, I mean, what is it?
Because over the weekend, you get a lot more trash. Not only if you, we do that.
We asked them to provide a date and it's like, the, the choice was Friday, correct.
If we make, uh, uh, give you an answer today, can you change it to Tuesday?
Just one second.
Not really.
Yeah, David.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I can't. I, I had to go through my operations to get that date, that's why. I can't make that decision.
It's a week, they're a week apart.
It's still a week apart, yeah, no matter what.
No, I'm just saying, the bulk of your trash is gonna be over the weekend when your family, relatives, friends come in.
Tell them to come on a weekday.
I wanna see your house.
As painful as it might. Yeah, I'm waiting for the conversation.
They call a question.
Thank you, Dave.
There's no such thing on the rumors rules as call a question.
Yes, I have the cheat sheet right here. Uh, all right, as painful as it may be, I have a motion in a second to go with a five-year contract for once a week with delivery or pickup on Fridays. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Most? My vote is aye. This made a slap.
Thank you, looking forward to working with you again and, uh, okay, we'll bring those cards.
Do we get to pick the color of the toters?
No.
No.
Uh, they're probably gonna be blue.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, I really appreciate you coming, I'm sorry.
He does have to do something about the streets that, like, my daughter's street, she has no control.
That's, that's gonna be.
My cars pull up and park on her street after she's put her trash out.
She has no control over her.
There are streets you're gonna have to deal with.
Joel, let's set up a meeting with operations, we can lift those streets and get that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, constitution's gonna be a problem. So, yeah, yes.
We'll set up the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks again. Consider applicable of a resolution establishing fees relating to the stormwater ordinance.
So, in September, council approved the revised stormwater ordinance, uh, in compliance with DEP standards and county standards. Uh, we just need to establish fees relating to those applications. So, what we did is we looked at five different municipalities that already had the stormwater ordinance in place or similar stormwater ordinance in place and summarized those fees into a resolution. So, if you remember, projects under two-hundred-and-forty square feet, uh, they are exempt from the stormwater ordinance. However, we still need that application so that we can track the amount of impervious surface on that property since adoption of the ordinance. Uh, the simplified approach is anything between two-hundred-and-forty square feet up to twenty-five-hundred feet of impervious and a thousand to five-thousand feet of earth disturbance. Anything that does not fall under that, then we start getting them to review by the engineer and anything over five-thousand square feet is an automatic full-blown stormwater management requirement. So, um, what we did is we broke down the application fee as well as an escrow and then summarized those on our final page of what those fees go.
And I forget, is that, that counted as impervious?
It is.
Yes.
Same with a pool, right?
Well, pool is.
Well, holds it, but.
Right, but you gotta pump it out then.
And you can read it for that.
I mean, ten by twenty-four is still, I mean, ten by twenty-four is fairly large to fall under the exemption, so.
And then the, you know, and then there's, there's been some discussion, uh, in the community regarding, uh, application for a deck, but you have to remember that, uh, those, those decks, especially this one in particular, was being designed with an underdrain system which captures all the stormwater running through the deck and directs it to a certain area. Therefore, it's impervious.
Oh, yeah. Now, cer- certain area in a yard or certain area on a road, does that make a difference? Because it's gonna sink down into the ground?
All, all the flow that's generated on your property must be maintained when you're moving forward.
I guess I'm going back to looking at the car wash. You can't car wash on the street, but you can car wash in your backyard.
Correct.
Because it goes, if you've got a deck on the back and it drains into your yard, is that still?
No.
That's different?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't call.
Because you're increasing the water. You're increasing the total impervious surface in the property for a one-inch storm, which is based on all regulations.
Make motion to accept the resolution setting fees for the stormwater ordinance management.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to accept the Schedule A Stormwater Management Fee Schedule. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Most? My vote is aye. Okay, Southern Regional Police Department budget.
Didn't we actually get a budget from them?
We.
It's the numbers and, you know, few dollars and stuff, I, I.
Yeah, you handed this out, right?
Yeah, but it's still not really, it's not, it's not a budget.
Yeah, it's not a hundred percent approved. Well, it's as close as they can get until they get. You know, like, okay. Let me, let me, let me make a quick summary statement about the budget. And please, Erica and Kim, chime in if I'm saying something incorrect. And my numbers might be slightly different than what, what Buck came up with, but basically, our, our 2023 budget based on PPU's and inflation is seven-hundred-and-eight-thousand-two-fifty-six. So, call it seven-hundred-and-eight.
Seven-on-nine-eight, priest.
Yeah, I, I have seven, yeah, but actually, I, the actual ten-five number is seven-on-nine-nine-thirty-three, but if you use the, the, but anyway, so it's around, yeah, call it seven-ten. Yeah, I'll do that, round it. Yeah, so, so you've got seven-ten. Our es- our budget estimate for completion for 2022 is six-thirty-six, three-forty-nine. So, we basically have about, what, an eleven percent increase?
Eleven-point-five-seven.
Yeah, eleven-point-five-seven. And the cost increase just due to inflation is about eighty-two percent of that. And the PPU increase, because we had arsons last year and because some other tweaks tweaked this up a little bit, really is only about eighteen percent increase. So, most of our increase is just due to inflation. And keep in mind, this is not a police contract year. So, it's only the three percent increase to salaries that we have this year. Next year is a contract year and it, and it could be higher than that. So, I'm just pointing that out so that you know that, I mean, we, we basically have a seventy.
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three thousand increase, but most of that is just inflation, which is eight-point-oh-four, I think you said? Eight-point-three-four.
Eight-point-three-four. Yeah, I was using eight-point-oh-four.
But if I can interject.
Interject away.
I found that there is a discrepancy within the numbers. Buck called me right before the meeting. If you guys take a look at, I'm gonna, they didn't have the page numbered, but the second page and the third page. All right, kind of fold those over. I think he made a goof at it. January, new freedom, eighty-eight, the next year, eighty-eight, sixty-nine, sixty-nine, eighty-eight, ninety, eighty-seven. You following me? There, that can't be right. He's saying that for two years in a row, our incidents were exactly the same for seven months. I'm saying, no, there's no way, you made, you made an error. So, he's going back over his figures. I think he put the same figures in two years in a row. Yeah, did it all the way through. So, this has to affect our PPU's, but I don't know what, which one of those years is right. It could go up, it could go down, I don't know, but it goes down.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Because I think I remember that one year was a bad, bad year when we were trying to figure it out last year. So, we're not gonna really know until Buck redoes and recalculates this. I don't think it's gonna make a big, big difference. I don't think it's gonna like, uh, need ten thousand dollars, but I think, uh, I think we're pretty close with what we have in the current budget. And I would recommend we just review the current budget with the current numbers that we have in there, uh, which is basically, I think, seventy K, seventy-two K. And it's gonna change slightly, but I think, I think we're okay. We may wanna add a little bit more of a question in there just in case, but.
I believe your budget proposal that you have in front of you tonight was the seven-million number, so.
Yeah.
Which we had at the time. All right, seven-ten.
I would think we would know for sure before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would hope, I mean. And this doesn't mean it's not gonna change because of insurance, because of workers' comp, those kinds of things, which they don't have final figures. It could go up because they're not expecting to get rebates maybe next year.
They have their insurance number, because we have ours. That was given out October sixth. So, they have insurance, they're with benefit, right?
Well, the other, the other thing is their, what is it, retirement? PM, be a, or less, uh, yeah, that, whatever, because they only audit every two years. So, they're trying to get a final figure, even though the audit's not due for next year, they're pushing. That's all I can say about it. Uh, okay, um, I think we should probably do the budget next and then go to the administrative reports out.
At some point.
Should be satin concrete.
Well, right, and municipalities have to approve this stuff.
Right.
But we're gonna get a full list of the breakdown of budget, right?
We, we have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, didn't, wasn't this asked for by September first? It was.
Yeah. That's not gonna happen. I mean, we're talking about switching it up and starting to have the year ago differently, right? So, we have our PPU's by August, basically. Yeah, we changed, you noticed that on the sheet, we changed it from, uh, everything was changed from August through July. So, I think once we do that, I think our budgeting process for the police commission will be a lot easier. A lot this year.
Once, uh, this is finalized, you'll give us a new one like you did last year with like committees in the front and all that stuff?
Yeah, usually what we do is that'll be after the January meeting, once everything's set and then you'll get the budget directory and just, just like, yeah, or this year, or this year.
I'd asked for these two back in February of this year and I was wondering if those can be included, a list of all renewable contracts with dates, renewable contracts that we need to be on looking out for because they're coming. Can you get a list of that?
Yeah, we have that pretty well assembled, I'm not aware of anything else.
We have that included in our final, in the final. And then also a list of all borough buildings with the current condition and the maintenance schedule going forward of what is gonna be for all borough buildings.
Right.
You had, were you gonna go through something with us or?
Yeah, um, you want to do this now?
Yeah, I thought we should do it now, I always opposed to wait until the last meeting because I think that's, this is, the budget's more important than committee reports right now, so.
Yeah, we would, now we're gonna do it through this.
Yeah, well, yeah, so I can get that.
Okay, um, so you have in front of you tonight the 2023 budget proposal. Um, obviously, you have the table contents. Uh, basically, the budget calendar that you saw before has not changed. At this point, uh, we would look for final approval by council at the December twelfth meeting unless there would be a needed delay.
I think the only delay would be, I mean, I'm assuming, I mean, Gal should be done with the police commission budget, right? I mean, what are we still waiting for? Well, as I said, she's still waiting to get certain numbers in for workers' comp and some of those other things that. Those are calculations, shouldn't be, have you calculated our workers' comp? They reserve, they reserve the, I, you know, was there other things? It was the retirement, um, workers' comp, insurance, I know there's another thing. Now, I, you know, uh, we didn't have another Friday's meeting, so as they come in, they reserve the right to be able to change the budget. I don't think it's gonna be anything major. Yeah, I would guess not, but, yeah, I just think it's.
On this page of the sewer fund, is this slider tank replacement proposal, is that anywhere in our budget? That that's gonna be in our future?
Not at this point, no.
The one that keeps on?
Yeah.
I just, the sewer fund's on there, I was wondering, is the slider tank in there at all? Any account in form in this budget anywhere?
No, no, it is not, because, well, we, we would still have to, we still have a budget expense.
Right.
And what's the projected expense of that right now?
Uh, the last was, I believe it was 3 million, correct?
How is 3?
Four. Yeah, it's like 3.2.
Yeah.
3.2.
And, and at this point. At this point, we're not including it because we wouldn't be able to, if we absolutely need it, would not be able to construct it in 2023, um, as we don't even have a permit. So, uh, really, the important thing now is that we're taking that step back and evaluating the overall need. Correct?
Yeah.
So even if tomorrow we get the permit, it's unlikely that it would occur in 2023. Or, and it has not been proposed to be budgeted for as well. Hey now.
Well, we do, we, we gotta wait for everybody else.
Um, I'll just skim through the, the budget message, page one. Uh, we did, as noted last month, we did increase the millage rate from 1.85 to 2.0. That generates about another $40,000 in real estate tax mileage. And the average homeowner will pay an additional $31 a year. Uh, we did break out a couple of the capital improvement projects, um, so continuing the stormwater work using those ARCA funds.
Uh, I mean, right now, we're looking at about a 70K increase to fire an EMS and a 70K increase to police. And we have a 40K increase. Right?
Yeah. The proposed increase is not near sufficient to cover the increase in expenditures. Uh, it was just a, a step. And that's really up for council and senior determination, we can plug those numbers in. Can you turn that? Either that way, or bring it back out?
No, I wonder what that was.
Are you referencing the mill that went up?
I'm sorry?
Is that, are you referencing the millage didn't go up high enough?
Right, yeah. I mean, we're looking at, I mean.
I looked at it. Go ahead.
It is, it is all.
Well, I said, I looked at it, in the last 11 years, we have risen 129% in our millage rate. Over 11 years. And over that time, Shrewsbury, Lent, 25, Glen Rock, 27, Stewartstown haven't even gone up. So I mean, it is low, yes. We are one of the lowest, yes. But we are on a trajectory that is off, off.
But how many ounces up?
In the last 11 years.
11.
Check that out. It has risen 129%. And on my other paper, I, I put how long it's been, and majority of these, it's been a while since, uh, they raised theirs. And ours, we just did it, what, years ago?
Well, that was your fire tax.
Yeah, a few years ago, we, um.
Well, the previous council before they left ran it down to 1.75.
But I'm just saying, keep that in mind, that we went up 100 plus percent.
But we're not, I mean, we're not frivolous items. And we, the fire EMS.
No, I'm not saying that either.
Police budget, I mean, we're, we're, we're faced, I mean, it's really kind of the reason that Glen Rock is trying to capture police funds, because project a police cost out 11 years and you've got.
But that's true. And out of the 67 counties in Pennsylvania, we are ranked ninth, York County, and highest, um, millage taxes. And that's.
As, as county, and we just.
Mm-hmm. We're, we're now the eye of the 67.
We have the control over school taxes.
Yeah, but I was saying, across the board, it just, you know, I think I wrote it somewhere. I don't know where I wrote it at. An 8% raise every year for the next nine years, you'll be at 1.4 million dollars in nine years. You know?
Oh, 40%.
For, for, you know, I mean, just that alone. And look at what our refuge was. And the school taxes are gonna go up every year for the next seven years, guaranteed.
Oh, yeah.
They always said it.
They always go up.
You know, yeah. Well, generally do, but you're guaranteed for the next seven years. I was at that meeting.
That's a hefty building.
Yeah, so I'm just, you've just really gotta be, you know, and it might be frivolous, and I say, hey, guys, water for 5,000. But you know, I mean, that's one thing. There are probably other things too, that might, might be able to look at over time, and equipment, and, and you just, you know, you've just really gotta look at the big picture, because the way this keeps going, it's, it's, we can't sustain this. And how long are you gonna be holding on by your teeth? Do you really look at it?
Yeah. It, it's, it's. It's difficult when you're looking at, um, municipal tax compared to county tax and school tax. Because usually, when you look at those types of taxes, your, your biggest return on taxes on your municipal level. For each individual resident and services that they get. So that's, it's difficult when you're looking at, you know, a 25 mil on, on tax compared to a, a 2 mil on, on a municipal level. Um, and that's usually difficult to educate the public that, yeah, your, your school tax might be $5,000, and your, your municipal tax is 500. It's still $500, but, um, the amount of services provided, and that's something that is always a good newsletter topic. Um, and even, you know, I have this little, uh, graph tonight where you just take a dollar bill and, and break it out into sections. So if a resident gives you a dollar in real estate tax, um, you know, 48 cents of that is going for emergency services. Uh, 16 cents is going for roads and streets. 13 cents is going for general government. So things like that, we can break out. And, and in my mind, it helps the residents understand where the biggest chunk of the municipal tax dollars kind of goes, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's always true. I mean, it's, it doesn't make, it's kind of like going to once a week and, you know, it, it was the best option. But I know we're gonna get blowback from it. I mean, you know that people aren't gonna like the, we went from 2 to 1, and the bill's going up, and like, why is that happening? Well, those are all things beyond our, it's even beyond Hennessy's.
It's gonna go up 43%, would you rather it went up 78%? I mean, it's a solid bill, but you know.
It's all relative, yeah.
You know, but as a resident, you know, we have to think about, it's coming from all directions. This increase, this, you know, it's not only us, it's schools and county.
Everyone goes to the grocery store and look at your.
Six bags of groceries for $100.
This year.
90%.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's. It's relevant in the budget discussions.
Oh, it's very relevant.
It's just, there's, there's just some things we just don't have a lot of control over.
Yeah, I'm saying, look at the ones we did.
Yeah, you're right. I agree.
What page are we still on?
One.
What's your message for?
Yeah.
Are we going to message two?
Yeah, unless there's any questions.
I just have one. Enter, oh, go ahead.
Uh, no, I have, are you on one, I'm on two?
Two.
Okay, um, two. I'm confused on where this general donation for 13,500 is coming from. Um, I don't remember that. I know the donation, EMS training and the 13 for the EMS chase truck. But the EMS chase truck, we said, was dependent on Shrewsbury Township kicking in.
That was dependent on the other municipalities kicking in there.
Okay.
Proportionate share.
That is still.
Yeah, what's the 13, yeah, you're right.
Yeah, 13,5 general donation, where the heck did that?
The previous years.
Oh, I don't, I don't think that's, I mean, we already did, we were 10,000 plus, we're.
So you're saying the 13,5 was what they were getting before they asked for the 10, before they asked for the 13?
You know, if you look at the budget, the budget this year was 23,500. That was 13,500 in general and $10,000 between. So that's why you're at 36,500 next year with the chase truck.
Right, so the only thing that changed was the chase truck for this year. Okay.
You kind of, I just did recall.
Yeah.
What are their inter-municipal services? What?
That would be services that we are providing to, uh, Service Town Borough for certain care enforcement. And this would be for, uh, evaluating all the fees that we charge if, if we go to Shrewsbury and sweep or Glen Rock and sweep, or if we provide other services that we're not trading for, what we're actually doing.
All of those fees are gonna go up?
As part of the municipal fees.
Do you set that, or does it have to be set by some PA standard of whoever?
We set that based on the actual cost. And then council reviews and approves that.
Does that, like the street sweep, does that cost go down to the gas going there, coming back? The wage of the employee, his insurance, his?
Yeah, it's, it's the wage of the employee per hour plus the cost to operate that piece of equipment.
The maintenance?
There's a little bit of overhead there. Usually, our inter-municipal services, you run a little tighter because you're providing that to another municipality. And you're not trying to make money, you're trying to cover your costs. And then.
I don't want to be the negative on it.
No, 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 I didn't tell. Yeah.
What did you say? I'm sorry, I'm going.
Uh, does anybody have any other questions on, uh, budget message page two? I won't break through and read them all, if, if that's okay.
No, that's fine.
The proposed budget includes an estimated increase on user fees for refuse of 25%. And you said that wasn't enough to cover the actual contract increases?
Uh, it wasn't enough if you went with twice a week.
Thank you.
It will be enough, it would actually be more than enough, and we need to discuss that as part of the budget.
It's only 11.10.
Right, yeah, we can drop that back a little bit. And if you look at that third page, I think I put a $10 increase in for next year as just an example. $10 increase in, in 23, 25, and 27. Again, we can evaluate that, but it's just to try to get an idea on projected revenues and fund balance in comparison to the contract increases.
Are you hot? Is that what you said?
I checked this office, maybe it'll get better.
Any questions on page three of the budget message?
Are we gonna get mail from people on the sewer going up that much? From 11 to 13, anything over in the minimum?
The average homeowner would pay $100 a quarter.
You weren't, you, you weren't here. I pulled some, some figures for some people. But I don't know why you get billed for 17,000 gallons. Well, apparently, you're using them.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just, you gotta be, keep an eye on.
Uh, like, like, like we said before, a toilet that's running can hit you for a thousand bucks in a quarter. I mean, it's.
Sure can.
Very easy to do.
This guy moved in and he went from, went from minimum to, um, 17, 17,000 gallons a month. Now something, and there's no leak. So you're, got us not fall asleep in the shower. But I'm betting you, we're gonna get some.
We're called DEP.
Yeah.
So it's my river basin commission. Okay, uh, budget message page four, anything?
Like, your community center revenue should go up a little bit, right? Because we're gonna have, we'll have more rentals. People are just starting to get out and party and have.
It's, it's based on our actual.
Yeah.
Plus, um, the actual rent going up.
Yeah, it's not a huge increase, but it is some, yes.
Okay.
Rent, the, the, well, maybe we'll hit direct funding. Where did rent get all their money all of a sudden? There was a 25, $25,000 inflow.
Yeah, but that, that is held in a separate account. So just like our capital improvements, our, our tapping fees for water and sewer, the recreation fees are held in a separate account. So that's not money that they can, and I told Mary Ann that, that's not money that you can actually touch. That's for improvements to.
That's fine, I just saw that and thought, wait a minute, all of a sudden, it shows us $36,000 and.
That was for the, um, apartments.
25.
At Burton team. About the commercial spaces. They had to pay recreation fees because they were not included in that original.
Oh, that's for the commercial building?
No, it's for the apartments, because you can't charge a commercial space.
Oh, I thought they already picked that.
Not on them.
Is that years and years ago, or current, or recent?
That was earlier this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Works for me.
They had a little bit of credit left, but, you know, they had to pay for all 20 units.
Well, that's what I meant, when I said commercial, not the, the apartments.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the only plan of residential unit.
Yep.
Any other questions on the budget message? Any questions on the summary sheet? Does everyone understand committed and assigned and emergency repair? Fund balance?
Remind.
Okay. Uh, committed fund, this is all based on your, uh, fund balance policy, which is in the appendix. Your committed fund balance is 16.7% of your reoccurring revenues. So that is money that you're holding in, basically, in case of an emergency, so that you can properly operate if you do not have income during that period. It's unlikely, but it's, it's a practice. It's a government accounting standard for a practice. Uh, so you'll see that in general water and sewer funds. Your assigned fund balance is for projects that, um.
I don't know the books.
Well, assigned fund balance is money that has been received. So this is your capital improvement. So you'll see that $44,960 in recreation. That's money that was paid in recreation fees. The $38,355 is water tapping fees. The $164.55 in sewer is sewer tapping fees. Because that money is designated for improvements, not just to be spent for normal operating expenditures. And then your emergency repair fund is just in your water and sewer fund. And that's based on your fund balance policy as well. Your assigned fund balance is also for, uh, catching row for projects that have been awarded but not yet paid. So we're anticipating everything to be closed out by the end of the year, that's the hope. But when you see that on your monthly cash flow, that's, you know, money that has been allocated and, uh, to a project. And then we reduce that as you approve those payment requests.
Now, like sewer, sewer expenditures, okay, is that our portion or before Shrewsbury pays?
That's the total operating expenditures of the treatment plant.
Okay, so that will, that really isn't a actual figure?
Well, it's operating expenses, not.
Yeah, but they pay for, what is it?
Yeah, that's showing your revenues.
50 some percent, okay. We don't reflect that there.
Not in expenditures. Not in expenditures, no, we're showing the actual, yeah.
That's right.
Does that page make sense?
Doesn't.
Other questions?
At the bottom, it says property lease Peoples Bank. It shows zero for our twenty-two budget, but we've received sixty-two hundred, or sixty-eight hundred for twenty-three. Why does it show zero with budget for this year, but we get, in every number by twenty?
Yep, your question, that was actually rolled into. That was rolled into another line item in the past, and when we budgeted for this year in transition, and trying to update all those accounts and account for everything, it was just missed. So we created that new account number this year, and separated those ones out. So you can see, there is an annual increase in that lease agreement. And that's why you see the change from twenty-two to twenty-three.
No, it was rolled into before.
Before, there were, there was just. I believe there was only one rent account, or property lease account, it was kind of all rolled together.
Where are you, Eric?
On page one, revenues.
Which, shall we?
At Peoples Bank.
Three forty-two, four hundred.
Okay, okay.
The Horizon is more under by Sealeen Jones?
Yes. Yeah, that's.
That's one of the.
That's one we can do, yeah, at least, that could be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that discussion.
Again, that was one we broke out as well, but we did that in last year, or this year's budget. That is property across from the treatment plant, and that's what we have, there, we have that little piece.
Where do, where do you really think real estate transfer taxes? Do you think it's really only gonna be that, or are you just making a guesstimate? The three-ten, one-hundred?
Yeah, I did struggle with that one, because if the market continues, even though mortgage rates are going up, the amount of transfers will continue as things come on the market, but it's, it's a.
They gobble them up as soon as they're.
They do, it's a conservative number, it's based on, obviously, it's one percent, so it's based on the sale price. Well, or half a percent.
I'd rather be low, be surprised, and.
That was, that was my take on it, is keep it the same as twenty-twenty-two, knowing that obviously, we're projecting one-twenty-five through the end of the year, which is great. Yeah. I just didn't want to increase that number and then be way under if.
No, it makes sense.
Well, I keep hearing that, but then I hear on the other side that things will never go back to the way it was before. Because it's.
Things are definitely sitting on the market longer right now.
What, three days instead of one?
No, the place right next door to Rutgers has been on for over a month.
Yeah, that's a commercial, and.
On the market, there's one that's sitting over here on High Streets for almost a month, right on the corner.
Ten days.
On the next page, on intergovernmental shared payments, intermunicipal fees, Stewartstown going down by fifteen hundred or so. You think they're building out, or?
Uh, yeah, Mike, and speaking with Wade, they're, they're kind of slowing up on a couple of things, and that would just be, again, a conservative number, if we go over rate. Trying to be a little bit more conservative along the revenue side.
The zoning and subdivision fees under general government, that shot up from fifteen hundred. When, let's see, no, the right one, yeah, fifteen hundred, and it went into, how did we get twenty thousand projected this year?
No, that is, that is a pass-through. So that revenue that you're seeing is what we're being billed by engineers for all their inspections, for their application fees. Stormwater inspection is part of the redevelopment process. So that's not necessarily revenue that, it is revenue because the borough must pay those first and then get reimbursed. We bill as things come in, and as projects are done, so that's.
But why did we think it would be fifteen hundred, but it's twenty?
Uh, based on a couple of projects that were done.
And why do you anticipate a cutting in half to ten for twenty-three?
It's all based on how many projects are received and what the need is. Again, it, it's a wash at the end of the day. So as long as we're reflecting that number in those fees and expenses and revenues, it's, it's not going to impact the budget at all.
Well, down to building permit fees under public safety, budgeted ten, ninety-one thousand eight thirty-three came in, what, what, what happened?
We had one commercial project that was sixty thousand dollars.
Is that crescent? What is going on there? I heard it was just gonna be, make a bigger parking lot, but there is obviously something more going on.
Uh, it was a large stormwater improvement, which was done before our stormwater ordinance, and they also are forming handicap access pad, and making some other exterior improvements. But it's, just the handicap ramp alone is rather large.
Going to see what I had in tax time?
So that huge increases due to crescent, doing these improvements?
A couple of commercial projects, yeah.
Yeah, that was, what, sixty, sixty-something?
Around sixty thousand dollars, yeah.
It's huge.
And then on the next page, you get into the miscellaneous revenue. We budgeted ten, but again, twenty-six came in. What, do you know miscellaneous revenue?
Oh, the twenty thousand estimated through is the payment from the Trail Town for the crosswalks.
Okay, Trail Town.
So that, we put that in there just to carry through the end of the year, rather than create a new account number.
And do you know why it's going down to five thousand? I mean, it's being cut in half for the new budget for miscellaneous revenue?
No reason other than, again, staying conservative on that number, and trying to properly allocate. Alders do not like to see miscellaneous expenditures and miscellaneous revenues. So we try to do our best, even if we know that it's going to be a reoccurring expenditure or revenue, we're gonna create that account number and get that out of the miscellaneous expenditures.
Even the refuse.
Any other?
As we put the seven sixty, we can put six fifty-three, three twenty-one in? For the refuge, solid waste contract fee?
Well, revenue side.
Oh, I see, yeah, that's expenses, but that's, so the revenue coming in will be the seven sixty?
Um, well, that was, that was at twenty percent.
Because that was at twenty-five, so that would be right.
Yeah, so if you want to jump to that, if you pull out your bid tab for, and go to the last page.
Six eighty? Six hundred eighty-five?
So what I did is I took the loaded, the pen raised for five years, looked at the starting quarterly rate going into twenty-two or three, increased it by ten dollars, which will bring in approximately six hundred, six hundred eighty thousand dollars. Leaving with the refuge fund balance at the end of next year with fifty-three thousand dollars. And that's projected out through those. Again, we can change these, we can make it. Any, any kind of.
Nice to soften the blow a little bit. You already got twenty-five percent in. Nine o'clock and all.
Well, basically, on.
And realistically, make it five, right?
Yeah, you could. You would have to do, because this is thirty dollars, you would have to, one year, you would still have to do ten dollars. You could do five every year, but one year, you would have to do ten dollars to get back up, to keep your fund balance in the, in the black. Otherwise, it would fall to the red.
They could do five for four years?
Well, my other concern was putting that ten dollar increase in twenty-seven, you know you're probably gonna go into twenty-eight, another increase, so.
Why don't you split the difference and make it seven fifty pounds? I bet you don't want to have at least two years in the room.
That, again, this was just an example I put together quick after getting the base date council came.
No, no, it's fine, I was just trying to soften the blow for the first year, that's all. So we made it five the first year, and then, you know, add the, you know, a dollar or two dollars each year until we get to ten. What do you think?
As long as the. As long as the fund balance stays positive, yeah.
Right, oh, yeah. Are you talking about raising five dollars a quarter?
Right.
Okay, if we were in a big number here, and all of a sudden, we're five dollars a quarter.
It becomes a sure winner whenever you add a lot.
Yeah, I know it does.
So, yeah, I just think we should try to soften a little bit, especially if you're gonna have a tax increase and.
Seven thirty. So are we gonna stick with that six eighty, or is that gonna come down under solid waste?